I call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Elrich. Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Elrich is here somewhere. I'm sure he'll be joining us momentarily. Next item on the agenda is council comments and announcements. I'd like to begin by welcoming the Boy Scouts who are joining us for this meeting. I understand that they're working on their communications badges and their local government, local government. And I said that we all have to be careful since they're talking about communications, all to be careful about it, clearly communicating everything this evening. But we welcome you and we hope that you enjoy this meeting. And we're very glad to see young people interested in being involved in local government. So, welcome.
And if you tell us that you're going to be here for the whole meeting, maybe that'll speed us along.
No, they've already warned us that they have to leave at the certain time.
At what time?
I believe they said nine o'clock is when they have to leave.
Right.
Yes. I don't think we've yet made a meeting in nine o'clock, so they might miss the end of it. Are there any other council comments or announcements? Terry first and then Joey.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. The Manah Food Center of Montgomery County offers food to the very low-income residents of the county, food assistance. And they're going to have a fundraiser day on March 21st in conjunction with Lord &amp; Taylor's store at Tyson's Corner. I have tickets that people may buy for $5. For a ticket, you get a 15% discount at Lord &amp; Taylor's on March 21st, all day. And you also get a 20% off on any one item. There are a few limitations, but not much. It includes, does include things as cosmetics, things like that. Anyways, anybody interested in supporting the Manah Food Center and at the same time receiving a discount at Lord &amp; Taylor's can see me or reach me at (301) 565-0190. It's $5. Thank you.
I just wanted to say to my constituents out there in TV land that I had to make an emergency trip out to California. I've been gone for about five days. And I had lots and lots of messages on my cellphone. And the one opportunity I got to check my email, I had many, many email messages. And I just want to let people know that I will get back to you probably in the next two days. So, hold tight.
I would also like to welcome the Boy Scouts. It's so nice to see you here tonight. And really neat that you're taking an interest in city government. If anyone would like to get more of an insider's perspective, I'd welcome your calls or email. And you can be in touch with me and I'm happy to talk with you. I also wanted to let people know that over the last week, I was in New Orleans, Louisiana. In my ward, there are two residents in Victory Tower that were relocated here after the hurricane. And I returned to New Orleans with one of them to help retrieve her personal belongings and had a very good experience there. We went and talked to the city council member that represented her district. And we were able to check in with FEMA and get some official documentation taken care of. And I feel very strongly that New Orleans will be rebuilt and should be rebuilt and reinforced so that it is even more of a jewel in our country. The second issue is a little closer to home, and it is on Carroll Avenue. We have a water main that has been worked on at night since sometime in November. And in January, we started having residents complain about the incredible noise that tearing up the street and replacing pipe at nighttime was causing them to lose sleep. So, at this point, I'm really ready to draw the line and say it's time for the work to take place in the daytime. If we can't ensure that the work will finish tonight, which we've been told that it might finish tonight, then I think we need to enforce our noise ordinance and insist that this work be carried out during the daytime. I've talked with Darrell Braithwaite, our Public Works Director, and feel that really letting this extend much longer is not in our residents' best interest. I think it's very important for the work to get done, but it could get done during the day when that type of noise would be more expected for that area. So, what I would like to propose is that this issue come to the council, that we be given a briefing about the various remaining issues there are, the timeline by which they'll be addressed, and maybe we'll be able to hear from some of the people who have been affected by this. So, I'd like to see that briefing scheduled as soon as possible. Finally, the Tacoma Metro Development Proposal has, well, don't know exactly how to portray this, but as you know, the Tacoma Metro site has been proposed for development. And EYA is the developer that has done a very specific plan for that site and is interested in buying it and has a sales contract with WAMADA to do that. It's been six years. And over that very long period of time, the community has weighed in repeatedly in a variety of ways. The city council has been instrumental in getting our Tacoma Park, Maryland residents a seat at that table and involved in helping influence those decisions. What's happening now is DC residents are looking at two alternate plans. One was proposed by Francis Phillips. The other was proposed by Lex Ulivarri. And they have pros and cons to each, but essentially they provide the community something else to look at, think about. And they are meeting tonight with DC residents and community members to present these two plans. WAMADA is holding a planning session on Saturday, March 4th, that's this coming Saturday, at Trinity Episcopal Church from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this planning session is, in my view, one of our last opportunities to get WAMADA to acknowledge what the community's priorities are and hopefully be willing to modify their support for the EYA proposal, which does not meet the community's priorities in, as far as I can tell. So, I encourage anyone who's interested in this development issue to come to the meeting on Saturday. It's a fairly long session, but I think a very important one. And I'll continue to keep the council updated on this project.
If I could just piggyback on that very important announcement that Councilmember Austin Lane made, I understand that there's also a meeting, I believe, this evening.
Right. That's where the two proposals are being presented. And that is at the Washington Theological Seminary. And the meeting started at 7:00.
Not that we're trying to lose anyone, but if you were very interested, you probably could come before the council and say your piece and then hot-foot it over there and actually get some information on those two also. Not that I'm trying to get anyone to leave. Anybody else?
I just wanted to ask the council to think about, I know we can't do this tonight, but in talking with some of the people in the Old Town business area about the proposed developments up there, the issue's been raised as to what the city council's position is on these things. And we, of course, don't have a position yet on what's going to transpire up there. But one of the questions that's come up in the business community is what's best in terms of the shape of development. Doesn't make sense to lose, doesn't make sense to have more housing units and less square footage of retail, or doesn't make sense to try to preserve as much retail and have fewer housing units. And I don't think any of us have the answer to that question. And in talking to the people in the business community up there, they don't have the answer to that question. And Colleen's saying she has the answer to that question, so that would be good, save us some money. But I was wondering whether it made sense for the city to look at approaching the county and the Economic Development Office there and seeing whether they'd be willing to examine the situation and give us some feedback on what you would do with, you know, limited number of square footage and the uses that are there today, whether the city should be looking at projects that promote more retail, or the city should be looking at projects to promote more housing. I would like to know where we should be going on this. And I think a lot of people are asking us to provide some direction on this. And I think we need more information before we provide direction.
Just in response to that, I would note that next week, we've got the folks who are planning the redevelopment at Carroll and Miss Moreland coming before us. I think your request is a good one. I think gathering as much information as we can. I don't think that's probably the only question. I think there's a number of them. And just so people aren't confused, the presentation we're getting on Monday is an informational presentation. This has not yet come before the council formally. It won't be coming before the council on March 6th in a formal way. This is more an informational presentation, which also gives me the opportunity to note that people from surrounding neighborhoods who want to get sort of an update on what's happening, this would be a good time to do that because they will be making a proposal before the council. It will be on the cable channel as all of our presentations are.
I got a question, sir. The condo conversion bill that is in Annapolis is the other issue I wanted to just update people on briefly. The Montgomery delegation voted 12 to 12 on Friday over support of the bill. So, there's a tie on the committee. And the committee chair, not the committee chair, the sponsor and a number of the other delegates who've been supporting the bill on the committee believe they're going to be able to pry loose a vote or two that'll give us a majority vote out of that committee. So, people who've been involved in this, I encourage you to, again, write to delegates. You can write to the entire Montgomery delegation. And then it goes to all of the delegates. And encourage them to support MC 61206. We made a couple of amendments to the law that made it more palatable to more of the delegates there. And I think we might actually be able to get this through.
And the 12 to 12 vote was actually somewhat of a victory because going in there, I would think, I think most people thought we were going to lose it. So, the 12 to 12 vote, which kept us alive, was a victory of sorts. And I would agree with Mark. I think we're pretty close to being, getting a majority vote on it, which is quite an important thing. Anybody else? Okay. We don't have any additional agenda items, so the next item is the adoption of minutes. I wonder if I could just ask the clerk a question before we go to the minutes adoption. You'll have to remind me, when we had our discussion with Jack Schwartz about, about the open meetings law, did he say we should, we should continue to put two reports of each closed session on, one on the meeting before and one on the meeting after?
We're only required to report the meeting after. We've been...
Just by habit, putting the report in the minutes of the night that the executive session was held and the following week as well. But we're only required to put it at the next, in the minutes of the following meeting. The reason that I asked is in the minutes of the 20, I'm sorry, the minutes of January 17th. There's a report of the closed session. And then under council comments, it said, Mayor Porter noted the closed session had been postponed, which looks confusing until you realize they're actually talking about two different dates. And so, just, you know, if the city clerk could take that item under consideration again. And maybe since we are having the closed session at the beginning of the meetings, maybe since it's legally sufficient, maybe it might not be clearer if we just reported it once. As I said, I'm not, I would leave that to the city clerk's thoughts about that. But I'd like to sort of see if that might be a little bit clearer. Any other questions or thoughts about the minutes? Somebody want to move adoption?
Move approval?
Okay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved.
Any others?
The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is the time that's set aside on the agenda for comments on items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. This would include both items on our work session agenda as well as any other issue that you wanted to bring before the council. I would ask, when you come forward, if you would identify yourself and also if you would keep your comments brief. We have a little timer on the podium, which will let you know when your three minutes are up. So, I see we have Pat Lovelace coming up.
My name's Pat Lovelace. I live at 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. And I've got some great news for you people tonight. California could not find a doctor to administer the deadly dose of narcotics in the practice of the death penalty. They could not find him, and the man had to be given a stay of execution indefinitely. Now, what we should do in Maryland, I think we should pressure our medical establishment to not allow any doctor and to dismiss any doctor who is going to take part in the killing of another human being in a violation of the Hippocratic oath. I also want to tell the people that in Maryland, we have gotten an indefinite stay for Mr. Evans so far. And we're working on keeping the death penalty at bay in Maryland too, and shutting down the death machine in all states of the United States. Also, I want to welcome the Boy Scouts here because I was a Boy Scout in Troop 62 in Sawagus, Massachusetts, back in 1969, 68, 67. I would like to tell the Boy Scouts that the Boy Scouts, you are going to be our future leaders. You, whether you know it or not now, a lot of you are going to be our future activists. You are activists now by being here. You have a chance to speak out against death, against war, against violence, and doing what the Scouts are meant to be. You know, I would like to ask you people to help us fight against drugs. You know, we don't need violence. We need to fight against violence. We need to fight against the death machines. We need to fight against warfare in all our practices, whether it's overseas or whether it's in our hood. The war has come home to our hood, and we need the power of the Boy Scouts to help us carry on the activism that Tacoma Park is well-known for. And I would like to ask the Boy Scouts, please, help us in the fight against violence. Don't poison your minds with drugs. Say no. You have the uniform on of the Scouts that I respect. Say no against discrimination in all its forms, whether it's gay, straight, black, white, man, woman, elder or young. Please, stand up against all forms of hatred, all forms of violence. And remember, drugs are the weapons of mass destruction that are in our community today. Whether it's Maple Avenue or whether it's Minnesota, we can fight against it. And I'd like to invite the Boy Scouts to help us. Carry on the banner of peace and carry on the love that Tacoma Park is supposed to stand for. And please, we have fought and won many practices. And I want to let you know, I have shown that one person can make a difference. Don't just go home and say it ain't going to work because I have shown by getting resolutions passed against the death penalty, by getting people to turn towards peace, by getting people to fight. We have done it. We will continue to do it. And I want to invite the Boy Scouts to continue on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. I think we all can agree that losing Tacoma Park's ladder truck to Fire Station 1 in Silver Spring is not a good situation. As I said in my phone messages to you last Thursday, I wonder if it would be a good idea to hold a public forum on this issue. If we held a public forum, we should invite Tom Perez, our Montgomery County Council Representative, County Executive Doug Duncan, who's certainly a representative from his office, and any other elected officials you think would be necessary. Fire Chief Jimmy Jarboe and/or representatives from our Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department could present our coverage concerns. I'm sure a large number of Tacoma Park residents would express their opinions on the subject. I know I will. And speaking of residents, if we did decide to hold a public forum, we would need to fill this room. The Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee could help, certainly with the publicity. But I see this as a joint venture between the mayor, the city council, the volunteer fire department, the Public Safety Committee, and the community associations. At this point in time, I think everybody needs to pull together in this situation. And any way I can help, if you all do decide to hold a public forum, it'd be my pleasure. And certainly also as the representative of the Public Safety Committee too. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Buddy, for that idea. I think it's a great idea. I think we can talk about it. We've got on the agenda this evening a discussion of a letter that Councilmember Williams has drafted. And I think it would be appropriate to include other things that we can do besides sending the letter. And the forum would certainly be one. I think it's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis. I'm here tonight as Chair of the Tacoma Park Committee on the Environment. And one of the issues that we've been working on as a committee is looking at mercury in the environment. And we discovered that we have an opportunity in Maryland because there is no legislation in Maryland to require removal of mercury-containing switches from automobiles before those automobiles get, which means that the mercury goes up in the air, falls down into the water, bioaccumulates in the food chain. It's a neurotoxin. More than 20% of women nationwide have toxic levels of mercury already. And this endangers the fetuses and children that they may bear. A lot of states have done work on this already. A lot of states have mercury switch removal legislation. Some of them have voluntary programs. Some of them have mandatory programs. From looking at the issue, it seems quite clear. There's also a lot of multi-state environmental organizations that are working on this as well. The Clean Car Campaign has model legislation out there. One of the, one of the things that we learned is that the voluntary programs don't seem to work nearly as effectively as a mandatory program. For instance, there was a conference call a while ago where the number of states were on. Pennsylvania had a voluntary program. They have more than 800 auto dismantlers. Thirty-five of them were registered for the program. That's not enough to make a dent in getting the mercury out of the environment. One of the best programs that was recommended to us was New Jersey's. I was honored enough to spend some time with the staff person that administers that program in New Jersey, who was able to not only give us their model legislation, but also tell us what works and what doesn't work about their legislation. We've been working with Delegate Franchise Office to craft legislation. This was introduced last... This was introduced last week by Delegate Francho and Delegate Hickson. We're talking to a couple senators on the Senate side to try to get them to introduce a companion bill. We think this is, it's going to be, because it's coming late in the legislative session, it's going to be a challenge to get it through, but it just seems like we need to make a dent now, this year, because we can't let that much mercury go back in the environment, even if we're to wait one, one year. So I'm here tonight to ask the council, as the time is appropriate and in the form that's appropriate, if they would make a statement of support for this legislation.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions about it? I'd be happy to do that, to answer them. The other thing that I wanted to mention before going is that we were asked as a committee to look at the advanced auto site, the site proposal that's out there. We've submitted memos just today, which I believe you have. I'm not sure if you're going to need to, us there for the, or me there for the discussion tonight, because you're having a work session and it's going to be a little bit late, but if you need us to do anything else after this, between now and next week, or whenever, just let us know.
Thank you. I believe we do have your comments here, and you don't need to be here for the work session. We will take your comments and incorporate them. I haven't actually had a chance to read them yet, but we'll go ahead and take a look at them.
They're very similar to the comments that we submitted, as the, that several of us submitted as the reconstituted Open Space Committee in 19, in 2001, excuse me.
Okay, good, thank you.
Hi, Nellie Moxley of Pinecrest. I support Catherine Tunis and all that she's doing. It's kind of like we did the Yucca Mountain. It's the same type of program. We worked hard on that, too. But try to do something with that. Also, Bruce, the ladder, I happen to agree with all of you on that. I think once they move it, it's gone. I don't think we'll ever get it back. So I think you should do something about that right away, too, anybody involved in it. I gave you some paperwork on the table to save time later that I don't have to be adding it into the bulk of our letters. There's still more coming. I'm hoping that actually anyone and everyone is invited to make their comments and put into this packet how they would not like to see this in our gateway at New Hampshire and Eastern Avenue. Anyone that would like to send a letter is welcome to do this to the city, our planning staff, or even Bruce Williams and the mayor would make sure that everyone in the council got it and it went to the proper people. So I'm sure that no one else would like to see this in our gateway as well. But this is on our agenda tonight, so I will close for now and talk at later.
Okay, we've got a letter in front of us from Pinecrest Citizens Association, which I assume is when you're talking about. Okay, thank you, we've got that.
And, and for anyone who's motivated to send a letter, the address is 7500 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, 20912.
All right, anyone else?
Hi, Howard Cohn, 16 Jefferson. First off, I want to thank Barb for the good news here in the newsletter. The two tests at the site for the proposed gym, the geophysical tests, one is finished, the other is about to be finished. The one's looking to locate the utility lines, and the other to test the soil for stability. So, and it's because we're about to get results that I was instructed to come here tonight. I say instructed because I'm here at the behest of the liaison committee. We met last Thursday, and we agree that this is a good time to move expeditiously forward to the next juncture in the public discussion about the gym. And that juncture is to get professionally arrived at cost estimates, numbers we can hang a hat on. There was a unanimous vote to recommend to you that the city hire a professional to get those numbers, someone or some firm that's equipped to look at the data from these tests, to look at the other physical constraints of the property, the logistics of tying a gym to this building, and any other factors that would influence the cost. And we would recommend trying to get three options, a high end, a low end, and a middle, so that we, we could look at numbers and move forward with the discussion. I realize it's going to take some give and take between us and you, and so for now, for tonight, it's just food for thought, but I'm happy to come back at your earliest convenience. Thanks.
Thank you. It is my intention to put on the agenda at some time in the near future, a council discussion, as we've talked about, about where we go from here in terms of the gym. And I think that the recommendations of the liaison committee would be one of the things that we would talk about at that point, so that is something that I'm going to try and get on the agenda as soon as we can. Anyone else? Any other comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item, which is the city manager's update.
The first item that I'd like to cover this evening is a financial report for the Community Center project. At your place this evening on the dais is a written report, which you can certainly read at your leisure for the benefit of the community. This will be posted on the city's website tomorrow. In the interest of time, what I'd like to do is just hit some of the highlights, and obviously the bottom line is kind of what the council is most concerned about. In terms of revenues, this is kind of the part of the project that hasn't really changed considerably overall. At last week's council meeting, the council did authorize the sale of two city-owned properties on Piney Branch Road. As the council may recall, we have been carrying a projected revenue figure from the sale of those properties of $400,000. The properties are actually being sold for $388,000, so the only change that is on the revenue component of the financial report basically deals with the Piney Branch properties and a reduction of $12,000 in the revenues. In terms of the expenditures, probably take a little bit more time on that. As I had preliminarily reported to the council, I believe back in January, we were successful in resolving a number of the proposed change orders, or PCOs, with James F. Knott, which would be processed as Change Order 25. As I indicated to the council, at that time, there were still several other items that were under discussion that we were hopeful we would be able to resolve before that change order was executed. In the financial report, if you go past the narrative, the first spreadsheet that is included, basically is entitled Change Order 25, and that is actually a comprehensive listing of all items that were included in that change order. The amount submitted by the contractor was just over $205,000. We were able to resolve these items for just under $47,000. This is consistent with kind of what we've been carrying in the financial report previously. We did feel very strongly that our analysis of these items differed drastically from that of the contractor, and I am pleased to report we were able to solve, resolve those items at the amounts that the city felt comfortable with. Just a few other items, I guess, in terms of the expenditures I wanted to call to your attention, which are items that basically we'll be working on. And what I'm going to highlight are basically any changes essentially from the last financial report. As noted in the memo, one of the items that we are carrying as estimated future expenditures is $200,000 for architectural design and construction administration fees to be paid to the project architect. This was a figure that truthfully was rather challenging in terms of determining what it is for two primary reasons. One is that the last billings that we have received from the architectural firm only run through the month of December. I have formally in writing expressed our concern about the timeliness of some of the billings and the challenges it poses for me in order, in giving the council up-to-date financial information. So we have conveyed that to the project architect. The other issue is that I had some concerns that, once again, have also been submitted to the firm in writing about the level of detail that was provided to substantiate some of the charges. It's not a matter that I'm doubting their integrity in terms of the work they've performed, but obviously we are using public funds to, to pay for this project. And I have requested that the firm submit additional information to substantiate their charges that they have submitted, and have advised them if that additional detail is not forthcoming, those invoices will not be paid as submitted. Their deadline for submitting information to me is to close the business on Wednesday. So depending on what I get from them, that $200,000 figure won't go up, but it may go down, if, if the level of detail is not to our satisfaction. The other two changes that I think are worth noting, both for the council and for the community, one has to do with the salary and benefit costs for Tacoma Park's project manager we have been carrying. In the prior reports, that reflected nine months of activity during the fiscal year. At this point, we anticipate that Phase Two will be completed on or around the end of May. In the interest of, obviously, we hope it would be sooner than that, but in the interest of being conservative, I have gone ahead and trended out what the project manager's salary and benefit costs are for 11 months of the fiscal year. Basically, that is kind of what we are on target for, and I think that's a much more realistic figure of what should be charged to the project than the nine months we have been carrying previously. The last thing that I'd like to note in terms of the expenditures has to do with a charge that is reflected on the expenditure sheet for mediation. As I advised the council previously, James F. Knott Construction has filed a formal request for mediation, which is their right under the contract. For certain proposed change orders, it is not all of them, but is, for a subset, if you will, for those items that fall under one particular subcontractor who has disagreed with the city's assessment of their request for payment. We have agreed on a mediator. There has been no date set for the mediation. My understanding from talking to Mr. Cox, who is our construction attorney, is that the mediation process, optimistically, probably will not happen for 30 to 45 days, and depending on the mediator's schedule, as well as that of both our attorney and the opposing council, it could be longer than that. I think as Councilmember Williams had noted at the time we first talked about this, I think the question that he posed to me was that these issues could go unresolved for some time to come, and I think that's a fair statement. Certainly, as more information becomes available and a date for mediation is set, I'll advise the council of the same. The projected cost of mediation, based on my discussions with Mr. Cox, run anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000. Once again, as we try to do is to aim on the conservative side, so basically we have aimed high and have included $15,000 in the financial report for the cost of mediation. Our hope is that we have done a lot of the work previously to try to resolve these issues amicably with James F. Knott. Most of the costs that I think we will incur going forward will basically be the actual time spent with, at the mediation session, for Mr. Cox's and Ms. DePietro's preparation time. Those are really the major changes, I guess, in terms of the expenditures. I did want to basically give the council an update, as well as the community, kind of a status report on where we are with the proposed change orders. This has really been the big unknown that we have been dealing with almost throughout this project. And the last page, basically, of the report basically outlines the proposed change orders that are still pending at this time, and they total just over $341,000. As I mentioned, some of these items are the subject of mediation, and so, you know, we'll have to kind of see what comes out of that process. The mediation, by the way, is exactly that. It is not basically a binding decision on both parties. It's essentially getting an independent assessment from someone else, and then the parties can decide where to go from there. By contract, any kind of dispute resolution is a two-step process. Mediation must proceed arbitration. So after we go through the mediation process, there is always the chance that the contractor may file for arbitration. I would also note that just because the mediation only encompasses a certain number of proposed change orders, the contractor still has the right to file future mediation requests on other items. At this point, the items that are on this list with one exception, which would be the very last one, which actually just got submitted last week, and we've not even had an opportunity to review it, the rest of the items have been actively discussed among the parties for some time. The city's position has basically not changed, and I think with the exception of 1142, which as I mentioned was submitted last week, we're really just kind of waiting to hear back from James F. Knott to see if their position has changed. But I think the city's position has been thoroughly discussed with the contractor, and I really do not foresee that altering at any point in the future. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Ms. Matthews, I really appreciate your asking for further documentation from the architect on the, his additional bill of $200,000. In addition to knowing what work was done, I think it would be also interesting to see documentation on who authorized that work, or under what authority it was done. The items on the last page, the pending change orders, and maybe you explain this, and I missed it, but are these the ones that are in mediation?
I've got to kind of take your questions in order. I would mention first that the $200,000 with Lauren Zabel, factors in both those invoices that are, have already been submitted to the city, as well as some projected future costs for contract administration for Phase Two. The work that they are performing basically is done in the direction of the city, so it is not a question of, they're basically going out and doing work on their own. I would say that the firm does coordinate very well with the city in terms of what their assignments are, and there is a, a clear trail of documentation in terms of what they are authorized to do. The issues that have kind of arisen really have more to do with the level of detail that we can basically tie a specific task to a specific monetary amount, and that's really more the concern, is just the level of substantiation, if you will, not a matter of whether the work was authorized or not.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the proposed change orders, I'm going off memory here. Councilmember Siemens, the ones that I recall are basically the subject of mediation would be, and this may not be an exhaustive list, I can basically highlight this and send it back out to you tomorrow, but I know 1102, I believe is, I'm sorry, 1104, which is entitled the switchgear piping, 1119, 1136, and I think there may be one or two other ones, but those three are certainly the larger of the group. And if the council would like, I can certainly give you more detail about those items and kind of what the city's position is relative to those. That would be helpful to you.
I'm not sure that's necessary now, unless other council members want it.
I think it's helpful, just to answer that question, knowing which items they are, but I would agree with Terry, I don't know that we need additional.
Sure. What I'll do tomorrow, this is kind of going off memory here, is refer back to the mediation paperwork and send this back out to you via email with those items highlighted that are the subject of mediation. I would note that there is one item that was actually executed by James F. Knott as part of Change Order 25, which is actually the subject of mediation. So basically, the contractor has essentially signed off on the city's position, but their subcontractor apparently is unhappy. So that will be an interesting discussion to have with the mediator. Obviously, the city does not have a contract with the subcontractor, or contractors with James F. Knott, and from a formal process standpoint, James F. Knott has listed this item as resolved. So that will be the one exception. I'll just put that as a footnote with the information-
But they need to share liability.
I'm not a lawyer, Councilmember Siemens, but that would certainly be the city's position.
So you're mediating between two parties who have exactly the same position?
On that, on the one item-
On that particular item?
Yeah, essentially, the way that the mediation is being handled is, the attorney of record is actually the attorney for the subcontractor, it is not James F. Knott's attorney. Our impression, based on our discussions with James F. Knott, is that they have, in their subcontract agreements, an obligation, if you will, to basically forward any claims that their subcontractor may have, but the counsel of record for the mediation is actually the attorney for the subcontractor, not James F. Knott.
Depending on the amount of time spent on that one item of which we're not a party, are the mediation costs going to be divided?
Actually, there's about seven items, actually. That is the only one where James F. Knott has resolved, resolved it with the city. The majority of the items that are the subject of mediation are actually unresolved between the parties. Our estimated mediation cost is, as I mentioned earlier, somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000. One item alone, I can tell you the, just to get, kind of give you an illustration of where this is at, is on 1104, which is the switchgear piping, which was, is a subject of about $51,000. This was an item where the city in December of 2004 had authorized the work to proceed based on a not-to-exceed figure provided to us by James F. Knott Construction of $5,000. The subcontractor then subsequently did perform the work based on a time and materials basis and the city's position. Just to kind of give you an illustration of how far apart we are on some of these items, was that we'd been given a not- was that we'd been given a not-to-exceed cost, and if there was some sort of communication gap or miscommunication between James F. Not and the subcontractor, that's really James F. Not's problem, not the city's. So I think when you look that, using that as an illustration, for those items that are the subject of mediation, there is such a disparity that it is worth the time and effort to go through the mediation process. Otherwise, my recommendation would be that we try to settle on, but that's not the case. Just kind of going quickly, because I know there are a lot of people here for some other items, just kind of hitting the bottom line. As we have typically done, for those items that are still outstanding, we have certainly done our analysis, and we believe that there is a significant difference between the $341,000 figure that is currently on the table from James F. Not and what we believe the value of those items to be. As we have previously done with reports, that variance, if you will, is shown on the financial report as sort of a potential add-back. We're confident that, or at least in our position, that we have adequate grounds for settling these items at less than that submitted by the contractor. So that's what that $273,000-plus figure represents. It's basically the difference between what the contractor submitted and what we believe the proposed change orders to be worth. After that is added back in, and this is a fairly similar figure to what was reported to you in early December, if those proposed change orders are resolved at what the city believes their value to be, we still have a potential project shortfall, if you will, of just over $200,000. That figure is fairly similar to what was reported to you back in early December. The primary difference, as I note in the memo, is basically the cost of mediation, the additional cost for Tacoma Parks project manager, and basically, kind of putting in a factor for fees to be paid to Lawrence Abel and Associates. As I mentioned, those fees are still very much under discussion, so that figure could change. But if you try to go back to the last report and you compare it to this one, that's basically the three major components of the difference. As I have mentioned before in prior memos, and it hasn't changed considerably, there are a number of sources of revenue that could be taken from the general fund. There are some savings within the existing operating budget. I have been hesitant to come forward and ask the council to do a budget amendment on those items until the financial picture somewhat clarifies. That would still be my preference to wait until we have a clearer sense of what might be needed. I did check the city's financial records earlier today, and at this point, the fund expenditures are still within the budgeted amount. My guess would be that at some point in the near future, with billings coming in from TRG Construction for Phase Two, you know, that might not be the case in another month or two. And there had been concern expressed last year, I believe it was in June, about waiting to do budget amendments, you know, wanting to do those before the appropriation was exceeded. If that is still a concern of the council, certainly, I can bring a budget amendment forward to you, you know, in the near future to keep that situation from happening. On a practical standpoint, what's going to happen is you'll do a budget amendment to basically put some additional money into the pot, you know, to make sure you're not exceeding the appropriation, and then by the end of the fiscal year, the financial picture will come, become clearer, and you might have to do a second budget amendment. I did want to bring this issue up, though, because there had been that discussion back, I believe it was in June. There is no doubt that, basically, we will exceed the appropriation in this fiscal year, and at some point, a budget amendment will be required. My recommendation to avoid doing multiple budget amendments is that we just give it some time, and we let the financial picture shake out a little bit, so that hopefully you're only doing a budget amendment on the Community Center Fund one time, but that, certainly, that's at the council's discretion. So.
Yeah, I'd rather do more than one.
You'd rather, okay.
So, where's the council? If you want to, at the point at which you feel that we will exceed the expenditure, the appropriation, if you'll bring it forward, then we can do that. And I think, if the council wishes to do that, I think we have an understanding that it wouldn't bring us, you know, totally equal by the end of the fiscal year, because then we'd probably still have to do something after that.
Okay, be happy to do that. So you should expect that that will be coming forward sometime in the near future. The other item, that was really all I had on the Community Center project. There is one other item that I did want to report to the council on. At your place on the dais this evening, I provided you with a copy of an article from Friday's Washington Business Journal, which basically has to do with the relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital. I don't know if any of you have seen this or not, but I had a meeting earlier today with Jerry Stocks from Washington Adventist Hospital. He had raised this article with me, so I wanted to make sure the council had had the opportunity to see it for the benefit of the community. What the article essentially talks about is that allegedly, the hospital is looking at a site north on Colesville Road. In talking to Mr. Stocks about this issue, he would not confirm whether or not this was the site. He did acknowledge that it was one of the sites under the hospital's consideration. And obviously, they are actively in real estate negotiations with someone, so they're not going to say a lot, but, so I can't really sit here tonight and tell you whether or not it is their preferred site, but certainly, Mr. Stocks did acknowledge it is one of the sites that they are looking at. Some other items that came up during my conversation with Mr. Stocks that might be of interest is that they are proceeding with compiling the necessary documents to move forward with a certificate of need filing. They expect to file that application on April 14th, so they are moving forward. One of the other items that came up during our discussion was the request of the CEOs of the several other hospitals that was submitted to the council about having Montgomery County undertake some type of healthcare assessment in Montgomery County. The suggested focus of that study was really the relocation or planned relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital. Mr. Stocks indicated that Washington Adventist does support such a study, that they believed, however, that it should not just focus narrowly on any kind of relocation of Washington Adventist, but that more appropriately, it should be a broader look, healthcare in the county as a whole. Apparently, the last study of this type that was done was done in the early 1990s. Mr. Stocks is going to see if he can locate a copy of that study for us, or we'll be working on that ourselves. But he indicated that the hospital would be making a formal submission to the county executive's office, my understanding was today, basically advising the county executive that they did support some kind of study being undertaken, but that their recommendation would be that it be a very broad-based look, not just focusing narrowly on their suggested relocation. If it has in fact been 10 years since that time, I think certainly that would probably be beneficial information for everyone.
Have, has staff had a chance yet to look into the certificate of need process?
Yes.
So that we understand how we could participate in that?
Yeah, I'm not sure I would say I totally understand it, but several weeks ago, I did call the deputy director of the state agency that basically oversees the certificate of need process, had requested some written information. If that would be of help to the council, it's sort of a variety of documents, I can copy that for you. What the person that I spoke to indicated is, unfortunately, it's not just one neat little packet that someone hands you to explain the certificate of need process, but she sent me some information that was helpful. I'd be happy to distribute a copy of that to you. My plan is to basically meet with her at some point face-to-face in Baltimore to try to get a better handle on the certificate of need process. It is very complicated, and it's a learning process, I think, for all of us.
Thank you, I think that would be helpful.
If I could just add to that, the information that I've been given is that certificate of need processes tend to be very different from one instance to another, and since there is, it's very rare that you have an entire hospital proposing to pick up and move, the track record of past processes might not be entirely predictive of what this one would be. So there's an element of uncertainty because of the nature of this certificate of need process also, so.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I would mention that in talking to Mr. Stocks, I think we should all anticipate that the certificate of need process would probably take at least a year, and given, as the mayor indicated, the complexity of this, and there's not a, you know, usually, if they're about hospitals adding a new service or something of that nature, this is probably one of the few times where you've actually had a hospital kind of relocating in its entirety. Mr. Stocks indicated it would not surprise him if actually the process was somewhere anywhere from 18 months to three years. So this is going to be a very, very long process, and I do think it would be beneficial for all of us to sort of get up to speed in terms of how we weigh in as a city organization and how the community can also have a voice in that process.
And we have later on in our agenda discussion of the Health Services Impact Committee, which is presumably one of the processes that the council would intend to help us with that, so. Was there anything else?
No, that concludes my report.
Okay, if there's no other.
I have a couple of questions. About the hospital, just, I'm encouraged that we've gotten the Health Services Committee on the agenda so soon, and I appreciate the mayor's attention to that. I do think that getting a briefing on the certificate of need is a very good idea. We might invite people from Montgomery County Council, as well as Prince George's Council, to join us in that. It may be a service that we can provide, that local forum, but include them in that effort. I know that they're interested in getting the information as well.
Sure, I'd be happy to do so.
Oh, and then I have a question about the Community Center, two of them, actually. The first one is, there's an area in the lower-level parking lot where runoff is apparent, and I'm not sure if this is a problem, or if it's something that is coming to my attention as an anomaly, but someone has brought it to my attention and asked me to look into whether or not there's an issue that needs to be resolved there.
Maybe what we could do, Councilmember Austin Lane, when we leave this evening, do you have a sense of where specifically the concern is?
Well, it's when the, when the parking lot is dry. There is one area where there is runoff, coming from some other source, so it's not when there's rainfall or snow, it's some oozing issue.
Okay. Perhaps we can talk about it a little bit more, then I can report back publicly?
Okay, that would be good. Then the, the other issue is, I continue to hear dissatisfaction with the city's handling of the access to the library, and one suggestion that someone made to me was possibly regrading the, the ground near the wall, so that there wouldn't have to be any intrusion into the wall, and, and yet, the path to it would be on level, and then there would have to be some kind of gradual incline on the interior path to make it consistent with that. But I, I know you've looked into different options in the past, I don't recall that being one of them, so if regrading on the outside of the wall and then some sort of creative access ramp inside is possible, I'd like to make sure that we've looked into it.
Yeah, certainly, we'd be happy to look into kind of any option that's brought forward. I think that the biggest challenge that was noted during Ms. Braithwaite's discussion with one of our architects in town, who's very familiar with just basically general design as well as accessibility issues, is if you look at kind of the interior of the wall, if you will, all things considered, that's, I mean, it's certainly a wide enough path for accessibility reasons, but if you have any kind of ramping system down, it's either going to, my concern would be that it might be so steep, truthfully, that someone would come with a stroller or something down too fast and hit the opposite wall, or that if you make it gradual enough so that it doesn't pose any kind of hazard to anyone, that you're going to start impeding on the width, and I believe those were the concerns that Mr. Salmon, who was the architect in the community who had met with Ms. Braithwaite, had raised. But certainly, we're happy to revisit anything at any time, Councilmember Austin Lane.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those updates on a number of things that we're working on at this point. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing is on a issue that the city council considered, has begun, had begun considering some time ago, which is the transfer of land to Montgomery County for the purpose of the fire station rear parking area. Did somebody want to start off with a quick overview of what we're looking at? Is that why you're here, Daryl?
We've discussed this matter earlier in work session, basically as part of the overall arrangement to make the expansion of the fire station work and provide the needed parking for the fire station employees, and reorienting the site to try to meet the concerns of the neighboring residents and the council. The proposal was to expand the station, and instead of using the two adjacent residential lots for the parking area, to move the parking both beside and to the rear of the building. The design that was ultimately agreed upon in public process required a section of city property to be turned over to the county. That property is basically best described as the rear of the city's parking lot adjacent to the co-op, more on the hillside area between the edge of the parking lot and Columbia Avenue. There'll be a section of that part of land which would be transferred to the county so they could build a peered parking pad that I believe is for six or seven cars. The construction would include retaining wall to make the flat surface, again, because we are talking about a fairly steep slope, and that parking area would, would become adjacent to and be in, in the same grade as the rest of the rear parking area behind the fire station. So it'd end up being one contiguous long fire, fire station parking lot in the back, and then it would be connected to the side lot, and then going up the hill towards Carroll Avenue. That's basically the general.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this proposal? Any public comments on this proposal?
Daryl, did you say 57 parking spaces? Seven, okay.
Seven, seven or.
I want to make sure I heard.
Seven or eight, seven or eight parking spaces.
Directly behind, on the slope, or?
Directly behind where the new fire station would be, on what is currently the slope, yes.
The steep hill.
Right, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be sloped, it would be, there would be a retaining wall, so it would be flat.
Okay.
According to the cover memo, it's nine spaces on the piece that we're talking about.
Seven, eight, or nine spaces.
Well, there are, there's a portion that has seven, a portion that has eight, and a portion that has nine, and the one we're discussing is nine.
Thank you for that clarification. Any comments? All right, I'm not seeing any comments, other than the ones that we've already received, so I will call the public hearing to a close, and we will move on to the first item on our regular meeting agenda, which is a ordinance which regards the transfer of this land to Montgomery County for the parking at the rear of the fire station.
Move the ordinance?
Okay, the ordinance has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comments on this ordinance?
I have one.
Joy?
I feel really good about this project, and it's a shame that Chief Carr has chosen this time to reintroduce the idea of removing the ladder truck from our, our town. I think that the council has a very good approach to dealing with that issue. I fully support the letter that Bruce has drafted and, and think that it's a definitely rational approach to a challenging issue that, that I hope Chief Carr will consider, and certainly, our political leaders need to be called on to take action. This transfer of land is a good-faith gesture on the part of the city to further a project that's important to all of us, the residents, the business people, the volunteers, the career staff, and everyone in Tacoma Park cares about the fire service, about the fire station, about this project, and I felt like we really got a good resolution to it, and this was just one more step closer to seeing it through. As I said, though, I am unhappy with Chief Carr's proposal at this time. I still support this land being given for the, the project, and hope that we can change, change some minds on the ladder truck issue.
I would certainly agree. I think that the, this, the transfer of this land makes possible what was the best idea that we came up with after a long public discussion, and I also am in support of doing this, and would encourage the council to move forward with it. So any public comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is the first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ordinance passes on first reading. The next item on the agenda is a second reading. The next item on the agenda is a second reading of an ordinance regarding the restoration of the damaged area of the police department.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. We've discussed this at first reading, I think we also had a work session discussion on it. Is there any council comment on this ordinance? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing none. Since this is the second reading of the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Elrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
This ordinance passes at second reading. The next item is the second reading of an ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Four to the fiscal Y, fiscal 'oh-six budget.
Senator?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, if I could, yeah, I just wanted to just note that there were some changes for the first reading ordinance that was presented to you on the thirteenth. If I could just highlight those, since these are noted, but just for the benefit of the public. The council had voted, not voted, but I guess agreed, that only fifteen thousand dollars of the funds that were included for pedestrian safety improvements would be transferred for transit-related projects. I did note, and I apologize for this, under the general fund transfers section of the ordinance, there is a typographical error on item number two. It still reads twenty-five thousand dollars, so while the whereas clause is correct, we will correct that typographical error prior to this ordinance being finalized. So that was one change I wanted to note in the ordinance. The other thing, as we were kind of moving forward, Alana Blanchard, our senior planner, did remind me that in December, the council had agreed to fund the installation of some decorative streetlights along Carroll Avenue. And basically, that was just an item that in putting together this budget amendment for first reading, I had overlooked, so wanted to go ahead and get that before the council, based on your prior direction. The third change in the budget amendment has to do with the item we discussed, I believe it was last week. It had to do with the replacement of the roof of the library, as well as a section of what I'm referring to as the old municipal building. This was, as we had previously talked about, both of these roofs are experiencing a considerable number of leaks. We had had an independent roofing consultant work with us to give us an estimate, and then we subsequently requested a bid from TRG Construction. That information was reviewed by Daryl Braithwaite, our Public Works Director, and she found it to be reasonable. The council had expressed support for going ahead and moving forward with the replacement of those roofs. So since this budget amendment was pending before you, and no work has yet been contracted for, I thought it would be appropriate to go ahead and have the budgetary authority, if you will, to move forward with those roofs replacements. As I had mentioned before, there are two other roof areas that we have received a proposal from TRG for those. Those proposals are still under consideration, but these two sections, I did feel it was important that we move forward with. So we went ahead and just included that in the budget amendment before you this evening.
So if I understand that you're requesting that they move or move it with those amendments, including the one that's not marked, which is under general fund transfers, item number two, to say transfer fifteen thousand?
That's correct.
So you're asking that it be moved with those amendments?
That's correct.
Would someone like to move it with those amendments in it?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded with those explained amendments. Terry?
I'm sorry, Ms. Matthews, I was rudely talking while you were presenting this item. Did you mention what the estimate is at this point for those other two areas that are not included in this?
I believe they're about, Ms. Braithwaite, can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking they're in the range of fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's somewhere in that range. One of the questions that we have is the price that we receive assumes that they should be replaced in their entirety. Ms. Braithwaite wanted an opportunity to see if, in her opinion, that was really the case, or that some repairs could be made. So that process is still under review.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments on this budget amendment number four? Questions, council comments? Is there any public comments on this budget amendment? Has moved with the changes? All right, seeing none. Since this is a second reading, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Elrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
The budget amendment passes at second reading. Next item on the agenda is a first reading of an ordinance regarding financial and accounting services. Did you want to introduce this?
Yeah, I just made a few comments. The council previously authorized the execution of an agreement with Linda McKenzie, the city's former director of finance, to provide some services in FY 'oh-six. In talking to the director of finance, she has requested authorization to expend an additional eight thousand dollars in fiscal 'oh-six to utilize Ms. McKenzie's services and make sure that our books stay up to date. She did have a position vacant for a period of time. There was a medical issue with an employee, and she was really not in a position to fill that slot for some time. Obviously, given the very unpleasant experience we had for the FY 'oh-four audit, I think Ms. Brooks is very diligent about wanting to make sure that the records are kept up to date, and I've encouraged her to keep me apprised of what resources she feels she needs to do so.
Does this mean that there's basically a net zero cost in terms of Linda's contract versus the unfilled position?
Actually, there's considerably more money attributable to the unfilled position than this additional eight thousand dollars that's being requested.
Okay.
She was just trying to be judicious in what she was requesting, but no, it will certainly cause no budgetary impact. It'll net out, actually, there will still be a surplus in that budget.
Are there any other questions? Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Unclear, this is a vacant position that wasn't filled for some time, or this was an employee who was still on the payroll and not present?
It was a combination of both, without getting too much into, you know, kind of privacy issues.
Sure.
It was an employee who was on extended medical leave. As is always the case, you try to the extent that you can to give an employee an opportunity to return back to work. You go through, you know, a variety of processes in terms of determining how much leave you can give somebody. We went through that process with the employee until it was basically determined the employee would not be returning to work. So the position was technically not vacant, if you will, because there was still a person who was slotted in it for a period of several months. Once Ms. Brooks received the go-ahead to proceed with her recruitment, then that took, you know, additional time. I would say that, kind of going off memory here, Councilmember Stevens, that the position was probably vacant four to five months before she was in a position to fill it.
And during that period of time, who filled the responsibilities?
It was both. Obviously, the council had previously, you know, authorized the use of Ms. McKenzie's services. Some of that was used for audit-related work. We did use a portion of that ten thousand dollars, and this information will be forthcoming to the council to do some of the statistical tables that some of the council members had expressed interest in. It's a supplementary part, if you will, to your audits statement. I think Councilmember Williams, in particular, I know, has indicated he likes that data. We do have that together. Ms. McKenzie did help in gathering some of that. And then, truthfully, some other duties were basically just being picked up by other staff members to the extent that we could. But, you know, there was still some backlog that Ms. Brooks is trying to stay on top of.
I'm hopeful, I'm just concerned that we have a, you know, retired employee back on the payroll again, and still getting retirement, I believe.
There are, yes, that is correct. There are provisions under the retirement plan where that is allowed. That is something we always check. Technically, it's contractual position, the income is reported, there are certain thresholds she has to stay within. That's an ongoing subject of discussion that I'm having with Ms. Brooks. In her conversations with me, she has expressed some hesitancy in terms of kind of her normal present staffing levels and trying to stay up on top of things. We've sort of talked about the different ways of handling that. Obviously, I, like the council, am very sensitive about adding positions, and I think to the extent that, you know, we've been able to utilize Ms. McKenzie's service certainly on a more limited basis, that's much more cost-effective than adding positions. But that'll be something we're going to continue to discuss as the development of the FY 'oh-seven budget moves forward.
I appreciate that, because as, you know, as we look back over the last few years, Ms. McKenzie has spent a great many hours in our accounting department and our finance department, and I would like to see if we need to add a position to do so, rather than continue this relationship.
Yeah, like I say, we're continuing to evaluate that, as we always do. I will note that she's planning to relocate eventually out of state to North Carolina, so it may become a moot point anyway.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, are there any, would someone like to, first of all, move the ordinance?
Sure, move.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't hear. So the ordinance has been moved and seconded. Is any additional council comments on the ordinance? Are there any public comments on the ordinance? Seeing none, this is the first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ordinance passes at first reading. The final of the items on our regular meeting agenda is the resolution regarding the Health Services Impact Committee.
Second.
Which has been moved and seconded. I think we've had a number of discussions of this. This is the committee that would consist of people with some expertise in health issues who would apply for this group and would assist the council in gathering information and doing assessments on health-related issues in connection with the move of the Washington Venice Hospital. And it would continue on for two years, consist of twelve to fifteen members, and so forth. Is there, it's been moved and seconded. Is any council comments on this ordinance?
Just a clarification on the process that we want to use for supposing members to the committee? Are they to apply to the city clerk and provide bona fides, or?
Yes, in fact, we've got an advertisement and a newsletter to that effect, and we'll go through the standard notification process.
Okay.
That's generally the way we do it, yes.
I do want to mention, I tried my best to structure this, as you had discussed, and so.
I want to express my appreciation, Suzanne. I think the resolution you put together is very apt, and you've done a nice job of covering all the bases. I also appreciate that the city was able to put it in the newsletter, so that we are publicizing it now, and we can complete the application process by the end of March and start making appointments. So that's terrific work. Thank you.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I would just like to point out to the community that this committee is being formed to deal with the health issues surrounding the potential upcoming move of the Washington Venice Hospital, but it is not dealing with the other issues, which will be dealt with at a separate time regarding any potential use of the land where the hospital is now located. And as such, I would also like to suggest, encourage Ward Four members to contact me if they would like to participate on this committee, so that we can continue, or we can ensure that we can continue to provide health services, not that we would provide, but that health services will be available to the community and the members of Ward Four. Thank you.
Any additional council comments? Any public comments on this resolution?
Yes, I just got one comment I'd like to make.
Pat, can you see that the microphone is a little bit lower than, it's hard for us to hear?
I couldn't see it over there at all.
There you go, now we can hear you.
Okay, well, I just want to make a comment. This is Mr. Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue again. I just wanted to comment that Washington Venice Hospital has provided me with excellent care, and I don't know what would have happened to me if the hospital was not there both of those times, because the ambulance had gotten me there just when my ability to walk was gone. And I'd like to ask the committee to, they should really pay attention to the low income, and also people who are also heading into the low-income bracket, that are not there yet. You know, and also, it'd be nice if we could keep some form of hospital, a hospital service, medical, surgical, psychiatric, in Tacoma Park, in our city, in our ward, in our low-income areas, where it is needed the most. I would like to see some form of emergency medical kept in my area, because I feel very frightened about losing this hospital, because if I had lost the hospital last year, I probably would have lost the ability to walk. Thank you very much, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, I just want you guys to remember, remember the low income.
Thank you, we appreciate that, Mr. Lovelace, and that's exactly, those kinds of concerns are exactly why we're forming this committee, to advise the council on how to respond to those. Thank you.
Yes, remember, once a life is lost or repaired, it cannot be gotten back.
Yes.
That should be remembered.
Yes, indeed, thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments? All right, all those in favor of the resolution establishing the, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just have one to make. I don't know how the commission, how anything is going to happen as far as committees or anything else. It's a little late. I don't think we've got time enough to form committees of people out of the neighborhoods that are going to play nurses and doctors and so on. We need to figure out a way and stop fooling around about how to keep this hospital part of it here. In other words, we need to have a piece here, as well as the building that's still there with all the doctor's offices in it. In other words, we need a clinic established, because by the state law of Maryland and all the other states, they can't just up and go and get a new place and sell it. By the law, it's specifically states, they have to have something in place of a clinic of some sort before they leave. Whether it's through by you or the council, I mean, by anyone here, or the ones that live around the hospital, or anybody else, there has to be an establishment set up before they move out.
There is, as was mentioned earlier, a certificate of need process, which the council is trying to get some additional information on, and I envision that the members of this committee will help us participate in that certificate of need process the best way that we can.
The seven-day at Venice people that actually own the property could give you the biggest information of all, as to the state law, as to how much land would be available for it, and how much would be required for the clinic, because there would be certain statements, I mean, certain statistics stating of how large that piece of land would be.
We are gathering as much information as we can, and I anticipate that the members of this committee will be very helpful in that regard. But it's not something that's going to happen immediately. The certificate of need process, as we heard earlier, takes at least a year and likely longer in a circumstance like this with the hospital.
So you can get things set in and find out all this.
So we are anticipating that we will have sufficient time.
And then hurry up, just because you may have a year or two, don't, just don't waste it.
We are moving forward, that's why we're moving forward as fast as we can on this committee. Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, if there are not, the resolution is in front of the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The resolution passes. And as was said, the advertisement for potential members has appeared in the city newsletter, and we would welcome all of those who want to participate sending in an application in the council. When we've got those applications in, we will begin interviewing members of the committee and putting the committee in place. Since it is now almost nine o'clock, I know we have the next item on our agenda being the discussion of proposed East Hampshire development. We're running about half an hour behind. My recommendation to the council would be that we take a very brief recess, and then pick up the proposed East Hampshire development as our first item after the break.
Council, agreeable to that?
All right.
We're always agreeable to a break.
All right, so we will be back very shortly. We are aware that we are about half an hour behind schedule, and so we will, I say this as the person who doesn't have total control over this, we will try and come back as rapidly as possible. Who's going to be discussing East Hampshire? You are? Okay, good.
Good evening.
Is the mic on? It was earlier.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Alana Blanchard. I'm a staff person for the city. I'm presenting Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the East Hampshire Development Proposal. It's being proposed by Mizell Development Company. This came before the council on January 17th, at which time there was public hearing as well as a work session on this item. Mizell Development Company is proposing to build self-storage on the site set back from the street. The site is a Maryland Gateway Site. It's zoned C2, and it's also zoned through the commercial revitalization overlay zone, which is a special zone in Tacoma Park and East Silver Spring to promote revitalization. At the last work session, the council indicated that they were not in favor of this development and would like to, they would like to not support this on the grounds that it does not meet the master plan or the commercial revitalization overlay zone. At this point, I'd like to, just for the record, let the council know that there was an additional comment that was sent by the City Environmental Committee to the council, as well as one from Jane Holmes regarding the Development Review Committee meeting and what occurred at the Development Review Committee meeting that was held at Park and Planning the week of, I believe it was January 23rd.
I believe we also have a letter which was referenced in the comments at the beginning of the meeting from the Pinecrest Citizens Association.
At this point, we are prepared to prepare a resolution for vote next week, essentially expressing the council's decision to not support this development on the basis of nonconformance with the master plan and not meeting the requirements of the zone. And at this point, we'd like to know if you have any further comments or questions. Bruce?
Can you just give us a little refresher on how the, I'm thinking about the meeting that was at Park and Planning, and we have the one set of notes about the sense of what went on and the input from the various agencies and departments. If you can just let us know a little bit of how those types of things get addressed in the process, whether those refinements take place before something gets presented to the planning board, whether some of them might get left until after, whether some of them might not get addressed.
Yes.
Just kind of a sense of the lay of the land of what's represented for the presentations there and how they're dealt with.
Okay. The Development Review Committee meeting is the first chance for all of the agencies to give their comments to the applicant, being the Mizell Development Company. At that meeting, there were many small site plan issues were raised, as well as many large issues, such as one agency, in addition to the city, felt that the plan, and this was the agency that is in charge of evaluating whether or not the plan is in conformance with the master plan, felt that it did not meet the master plan and also was not in conformance with the use requirements that's in the zone. And generally, at this point, the applicant would meet with Park and Planning in order to go over the comments and clarify any, as well as to make adjustments to their site plan in accordance with the comments. The applicant can choose not to do this and can present their site plan to the planning board as is. Generally, the applicant would present any changes to the planning, the Park and Planning staff prior to when the staff report is due, which in this case, Park and Planning has requested comments by March 13th. And then, once, generally, no changes are admitted for the record after March 13th. Now, the developer could present further changes to the planning board if the planning board wants to try to negotiate any changes with the developer. That's what has happened in the past. Because this is, because of Clarksburg, this process has changed, so I'm not sure how much negotiation would occur at the planning board and how much would be expected of the developer upfront.
Sure.
And, but, what could happen at the planning board is there could be a continuation, there could be a decision, approval or denial, approval with, usually, it's approval with conditions. But the developer could ask for continuation if they felt, or the planning board could ask for continuation if they felt that they would like, that there was a possibility of significant change being made.
So, I guess, based on that, what I think it would be helpful to have in our resolution would be would be statements dealing with the fact that we don't think it meets the goals of the master plan. We don't think it promotes commercial revitalization, that the use is not compatible with existing commercial businesses that are adjacent to it, and that it's not pedestrian-friendly, and that, to the extent that we can give some particulars to buttress those, it's good. On the other hand, my sense is that no matter how many particulars we would give, the overarching argument is that their design, their use, doesn't cut it. So I guess I'm not quite sure the extent to which we should get into details as opposed to just saying, "This thing, we don't like it, and there's not much you can do to change it that would make us be happy with it." And so, any guidance you can give us or any thoughts that you have on that drafting of it to address that would be helpful.
Generally, the planning staff refers that we include as much of the master plan, as much as the zone as possible in the resolution, so that they can then directly quote it as part of their staff recommendation and so that the planning board can then refer to it as part of their opinion.
Okay.
I just think we need to make clear, there's no way to modify this thing that's going to meet our objections. I mean, there are no design changes. There's nothing they can do that makes it acceptable. And you just need to, I think, underline, like you said, I mean, we need to present, not the "we don't like" case, but the "we don't like it because" case. And so, I'm glad you're on top of dealing with what the planning board wants to say.
We can't say this in the resolution, of course, but to fill out the record a little bit, the design as presented is an eyesore, and it will make an already shabby gateway even worse. Second, the neighbors oppose it. Third, there's some mystery surrounding the ownership or the leasing arrangement of it that the owners have not been particularly forthcoming about. And fourth, when I suggested to them that what the neighbors would really like to see would be a richer array of retail, the response was, "Well, we'll be selling boxes", which doesn't quite cut it. So, you know, for those reasons, while they might not find themselves in the resolution, there's just no way to look at this except it's completely unacceptable.
I think also, when we talked last, we were talking about the lease, and it seemed like the Mizel folks were saying that when they bought the property, there was a lease that was extending until 2020. But the research seems to come back and show that they just renewed the lease in 2005, which is just a little disingenuous. And then I also, when I was reading the report this evening, noted that there's no pictures going forth with the county, and they're having... Just asked for pictures of what it's going to look like, as well as, if I understood it right, a comment about green roof funding, and now the new facade that we've asked for is much more expensive and that it might... Do I understand that right, that then they intend to not do the green roof?
Right.
So there were a couple of other things that were strange in the whole process.
Yeah. I don't... I think that they felt like they could fund one or the other, or that they would offer one or the other, but not both of them.
The other thing, and I don't remember whether we talked about this before, but there was a question as to whether the city had to take account of the fact that they had a lease that restricted their use of the site. And if I remember correctly, the answer that we got was that, "No, that was not our problem."
Right.
Basically. That they have either been restricted or restricted themselves in a certain way, that's not the city's...
It's beyond the scope of the planning process.
Yes.
Right.
That's up to them. They have to deal with it, not us.
So, no, no, and no.
Yes. I think...
Seven no's.
I think the council is in accord with where you seem to be heading with this. So maybe you could just refresh our memories as to what the process is from this point forward.
Okay. We're going to draft a resolution this week, and we'll bring in the resolution, I believe, we're on the agenda next week for the council meeting, so that will go before you for approval, review and approval.
We'll vote no.
And then that resolution will then go to the planning staff, and that will be attached and used when they make their recommendation, and then attached to their recommendation along with any letters from the community or recommendations from the community would then be attached to the planning board staff, which then is posted as part of the planning board agenda. And then, once it goes to the planning board, then at that point, the community may want to go to the planning board meeting and testify.
And assuming there were no major changes to the process, if the planning board were to want to vote to approve with our resolution saying no, they would have to approve by a supermajority?
Right.
Okay. Any questions in terms of process? So you're going to come back to us next week with the resolution. At that point, there will be an opportunity for public comments. Are we planning to send forward to the planning board the letters that we've received? Or most of those been copied to the planning board already?
I have a copy of it.
I think it would... If there... I'm assuming people who sent communications to us would also send to the planning board, but in case that hasn't happened, perhaps we could forward our packet of information to them?
I'll forward all of them.
That would be helpful. Any further questions from the council? Okay, this is going to be on the agenda for next week, and there will be opportunities for public comments at that point. You will have... People will be able to comment on the agenda as it's been drafted by staff. Thank you very much, and thank you for that information. All right. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of the stormwater fee.
I'll just make some introductory comments, and then there actually will be a PowerPoint presentation by the public work staff. As those of you who were on the council last year during the FY06 budget process, I indicated in my budget transmittal message to the council that I had concerns that the present stormwater management fee was insufficient to meet the city's maintenance of the system, as well as our capital needs, and advised the city council at that time that during the course of FY06, staff would be undertaking a review of the stormwater management fee and be reporting back to the council on its findings. And that's the purpose for the work session this evening. I had asked the mayor if we could get this on the agenda sooner rather than later, because obviously, whatever fee is in place will determine the revenues that will be available for FY07. We're in the process, obviously, of putting that budget together, and it's scheduled to be distributed to the council by mid-April. So my hope is, in addition to providing you with information this evening, that perhaps we can get some, at least preliminary, direction from the council in terms of where you want to go with the stormwater management fee for the next fiscal year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Darryl and Ali.
Do you want to begin with the PowerPoint presentation? Okay, then the council, we should move down into the first row of seats.
Wouldn't it be an abuse?
Glad we're going to present you with a brief background of how the stormwater utility fee... Good evening. So now, we're going to present to you a brief background of how the stormwater fee, utility fee, came to be and the basis on which the base rate was determined, and also give you some overview of the budget comparison between the revenue needs that went into determination of the base rate, as well as an overview of the, you know, current program that we have, which includes our maintenance and operation of the existing system, as well as the added requirement of national pollution... And national pollution discharge elimination system Phase II for small communities, which we are one. And concluding with a survey of, or a limited survey of stormwater fees in similar surrounding communities, also nationwide. With that, we go to the next slide here. As a result of a detailed study by CH2M Hill in 1996, a stormwater management program was established in Title 16... There's no sound here. Title 16 of the Tacoma Park. There wasn't an annual stormwater utility fee that was established as a result of that study. We'll go to bases of the determination of the rate. The basis of the determination of how the stormwater fee was established is on three components: the type of land use, which includes residential, commercial, and what have you, and the amount of contribution to the runoff, which is directly correlated to the previous area that is on that particular property. And also, one important component was the cost of implementation of the program. At that time, CH2M Hill calculated a $28 rate on an annual basis to cover the cost of the stormwater management program based on equal and residential unit, which is the amount of improved area. The $24 rate was set, which was raised in 1999 to a resolution to $28.63, I believe, was the target. This is a chart that CH2M Hill put together at the time for comparison of the revenue generated based on the annual fee. Basically, the equal and residential unit is 7,944 per foot, or 7,944 units, based on 12.75 square feet of improved area on the average on the city. If you take those numbers and our projected... If we go into our projected needs for FY07 to upkeep the program and also fulfill our obligation to MPDES, it would come up about $375,000, which to generate that amount of revenue, we need a base rate of $47.20. This is a diagram of our revenue needs in 1996, which was $200,000, based on which this current rate was established. In FY06, current year, we have $220,000, $220,000, $230,000 dollars, our total budget, which the component of the budget are maintenance and TV inspection, capital investment projects, and the component of MPDES was actually fulfilled by using those existing budget categories. But our projection for FY07 to upkeep our good standing on MPDES and also continue our maintenance is $375,000. I have provided a detailed comparison here of the budget items. As we see in 1996, revenue needs, based on which the rate was determined, was $200,000. Our current... There is again additional order. Our current budget is actually 2030, more like 2030 than 2020. Those don't add up. Our projected needs are... And as you noticed, there are some items that is missing in 1996. Revenue needs, based on which, again, the rate was determined. Our projected needs for FY07 for those items, with the added item of MPDES, is $335,000. As we go on to give you an overview of our current stormwater management program, our conventional maintenance and system improvements, which includes our capital improvements project, and also permitting, which is a part of our conventional system, as well as a requirement of our MPDES. Our video inspection and cleaning, which is the core of our maintenance, is done on an annual basis, one third of the city, which would then result in doing a cycle of three years for the entire existing drain system to be inspected and maintained, cleaned. While 1998 contract was rewarded in 2005, and the rates that we got in the current contract is approximately three times, or more than three times, than what we had before. So that's an added element of the cost there. Our system maintenance improvements, which includes our, you know, capital improvement or capital investment projects, as well as repairs of the defective systems, has also, like any other construction, have an upward trend of the cost. Some of the system defects could be deferred and dealt with later. Some, however, are progressive in nature, and as we leave them and try to manage them later, they would expand in the scope, and hence, the cost would go up. The stormwater permitting process is another way of our control. As you know, the code call for any new construction that disturb more than 5,000 square foot of land to be permitted for stormwater management. We do use best management practices and implement, in addition to our own Title 16, the Stormwater Management Manual of the estate as a part of our conventional system. That takes us back to the overlapping segments of MPDES Phase II requirements. We currently have a very good standing, satisfactory standing, and capital areas actually outstanding performance in keeping up with the requirement of MPDES. But to keep up that, we need to at least invest in two specific areas. One is to upgrade our GIS, populate the data, and do periodic testing of the water quality at the discharge point into the Sligo Creek. With that, I go to the six different components of the MPDES requirements and try to, you know, brief you on each one of them. The first requirement is public educational outreach. As you know, we've been pretty active in that area, trying to get our drains stenciled and flyers distributed. And also, the participation of the public participation is kind of an overlapping requirement requirement that is addressed by forming joint cooperation with the community associations, civic groups such as Friends of Sligo Creek. And that also includes promotion of sustainable approaches, like rain gardens, retention basin, filtration, on public and private properties, encouraging it on the, on the private properties and implementing some of it on the public property. We, a major portion of NPDES is illicit discharge detection and elimination, which that particular requirement would impose on us to have our GIS database upgraded, populated with data, and also locate our outfalls, which is the discharge location of the Sligo Creek. And we have to develop a testing program, periodic testing program with the quality of the water that is discharging to the Sligo Creek. There is a measurable goal that by the fourth year of our participation into NPDES, we need to be in a position to have detected and eliminated most of the illicit discharge. That again requires our GIS to be upgraded so we can effectively do that. Another element of illicit discharge detection elimination is enforcement. And currently, we are, we have to, like many other communities, and as I understand it, most of the communities rely on state for enforcement of the laws, environmental laws, in case there is an illicit discharge into the creek. We are now contemplating on shifting that responsibility to using the county resources as opposed to state just for expediency, because it would expedite enforcement. With that, we go to the construction site runoff control, which is basically the same as sediment and erosion controls. Currently, that responsibility is on Montgomery County. We have to, in our annual report, we have to always report it that we have an understanding with the county to continue that. Actually, our permit is that they are accepting the responsibility for a period of two years, after which we have to actually renegotiate or renew that. Post-construction runoff control is done basically through our permitting process. To effectively implement that, we still need, we also need to upgrade our and expand our GIS capabilities in order to enable hydraulic modeling and land use, so we can more effectively control and effective stormwater management on quality and quantity basis. This last requirement of the NPDES is pollution prevention and good housekeeping, which we address through our maintenance, basically our core maintenance, which is video inspection services. Also, we need to do a scheduled maintenance and upkeep our street sweeping program. With that, I'll present to you a sample of what other communities are charging in terms of storm utility to cover the cost of the stormwater management program. In 2005, Black and Beach did a nationwide survey of 43 cities and indicated that the annual average of $60 is the fee for those 43 cities. Locally, we did our own survey, looked up some other resources, and the range is between $12.75 to $59 North Fork, Virginia. The local average is something around $47.91. That concludes our presentation of the study of the stormwater fee for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that very thorough presentation.
One is, I wanted to just remind my colleagues who were on the council, I don't know whether it was last term or the term before, but we had a visit from the Chesapeake Bay, well, the environmental folks at COG, who helped present what was coming for stormwater management that we can now see coming through in the engineer's report of the NPDES requirements for phase, for whatever it is, phase two, stage two, that it was predicted that it was going to be coming, so it's no surprise that there are more requirements and more costs associated with it. And one of the things that I remember from discussions at that point was that Montgomery County's rate was low because there were some things they weren't doing, and as we discussed at that point, whether it was worthwhile doing something like turning things over to the county, we, it was very obvious that there were things that were important to us that we wouldn't get if that were the case. I don't remember what those were, but I just wanted to point out that there's a, there's a reason why their rate is lower. And I know that one of the other changes that we made that was reflected in your chart was that, at the beginning, we didn't allocate any portion of the engineer's salary and benefits to the dealing with stormwater, and since that is obviously a big part of what you do, I think that was the right decision to include that in the costs, which also affected our present costs. So just some observations.
The Montgomery County's fee, there is a footnote there that Montgomery County has what you call a water quality tax, which is above and beyond in addition to the utility fee, which is not reflected in the chart. Also, like Prince William County is another community that's lower than ours in the surrounding area. It's $21 for ERU, one residential unit. However, they have something similar, I mean, something around, I'm not sure, 23 cents per square foot for commercial properties. And the population density also is another column that I could have presented to you is, the population density of Tacoma Park is actually, after DC, is the highest in the areas that I have looked into. This probably because of a smaller area. Prince William and Montgomery County's population density is a lot lower than ours. That means a lot in stormwater management. You have a lot more to potential for pollution, although we are mostly residential, but that is offset by the fact that we have a larger population density. There is also pollution potentials associated with it, residential with it, as well as commercial.
Yeah. And just one other quick observation, those of us who were around at the time when we implemented this are well aware of it, but I'm not sure how many other people are and how well people remember, that before we had the fee, and I think we were one of the first, if not the first, in the area to implement the fee. The way we paid for stormwater was so many cents on the tax rate, and that one of the reasons we went to this fee system rather than the rate system, there were two, two reasons. One was that there were wild fluctuations in the amount that we had on the tax rate every year. It was as low as, I think, 2 cents on the tax rate, and as high as 8 cents on the tax rate. And that was when the tax rate was based on the 40% figure, so you'd have to multiply that two and a half times to get the current equivalent, so it could have been as high as 20 cents on the current tax rate. And the other reason was that it was a much more equitable system. It put the cost of dealing with stormwater more squarely on the users who generated the cost. And it also, at the time, the idea was that it would equal or lower the cost to the single-family homeowner, and would increase costs particularly to those entities that were tax exempt but could be hit up for the fee. So it was a way of collecting money from those who contributed to the problem who hadn't previously. So all of that gets me to the point where I just wanted to observe that I'm not surprised we got here in terms of the increase in costs. I think we were a little bit low to begin with, and I'm comfortable with kind of what you've presented and where we are, and not uncomfortable in dealing with the increase in costs, and I think it's still a relative bargain for our residents.
I saw Terry, and then Doug, and then Colleen.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. And I really thank you for this presentation. It was interesting to see the analysis that you've done, and I appreciate your thoroughness in looking at this. It's especially refreshing considering just a couple of years ago, we were, it was being recommended that we take money out of the Stormwater Fund to use for other purposes. And I think this is a more realistic approach to determining what we need and what we truly need to do. My understanding of your presentation is that if we were to actually raise the stormwater fee to the suggested level in your presentation, that we would be meeting the bare minimum requirements of the mandate for stormwater work in the city. Is that true?
I would, that's just my own personal opinion. If I were to care, if we would, if we were to find it more properly, we probably would be better than average. I would answer, the reason is because I get a sense of where other communities are, you saw the rates, and my feeling is that, not to be self patronizing, but the city has done well with, given the funding. So we are probably ahead of care in many respects, with lower budget expenditure. And that's not just personal, it's the whole public works, and the history of the public system.
I guess my question, maybe let me reword the question. Is there, are there any things in the proposed programs that you've outlined there that are, that exceed what's required by the NPDS program?
The measurable goal, I'm just going to go on that particular illicit detection discharge, which is probably one of the core points of NPDS. The measurable goal is that by the fourth year of participation, we should have detected and eliminated most of the illicit discharge. If the question is, have we done that, the answer is no. If the question is where we stand with regard to that compared to the other communities, I would say that we are ahead of the care. We have the good awareness, citizenry here, Friends of Sligo Creek, we report it to the state a lot more often than other people do, so that awareness is still creates that. From the standpoint of, are we technically in a position to be able to eliminate all or most of our illicit discharge because of lack of tools, and GIS is only a tool, it doesn't do it for you, it enables you to do it. And if we do, you know, expand our GIS as I termed it, we would be able to actually identify the critical discharge point on the Sligo Creek, and quarterly or however often, whatever frequency is required, test the water. Actually, at that point, we would be probably with the program. We're not there yet.
And of course, illicit discharges is only one part of it. There are also just kind of slowing the runoff is another big part of stormwater management, being able to have such things as rain gardens so that the water doesn't rush down into the creeks so quickly and into the streams. And I guess my point with all this is that I think, I would like to see Tacoma Park be not just reacting to the legal requirements as all other communities are across the state and the country, but I would like to see us be, take a leadership role in environmental issues, especially stormwater management. And so I would like to suggest that this council not just raise the stormwater fee to the point that meets the minimum requirements, as you've suggested with your analysis, but that we include a few more pennies to be able to do some more innovative things and actually implement those things, such as rain gardens, and put a little bit more money into that, those types of things. Again, to move us into the leadership position that we, that we should have in environmental issues. Thank you.
George.
I wanted to find out a little bit more about the other developed property fee. I didn't quite understand it, and I hope, I hope you can go over it just briefly. It sounded like the fee for single family was somehow multiplied by some member or other developed property.
Just break it down to basics, is when they did this study, they looked at all the properties in the city, the impervious area, each property has, private, or commercial, residential, commercial, and that's whatever the city has. Then they came up with this unit, which is called equivalent residential unit, ERU, and they decided that that was 12,000, on the average, that was 1,275 square foot of previous area. And then when they did all of the calculations, they came up that there is 7,944 ERUs, which is equivalent residential unit in the entire city. They say every single family is going to be charged a fixed amount, which is $28.63 for 12,700, whether they have more or less, that's just distributed equally. Now, if you have a commercial property, then the 12 impervious area that you have on your property would be divided by that 1,275 square foot, that gives you one and a half of two ERUs. And that two ERUs would count for two times $28, and that would be your fee. If you had five times that much, that would be five times. That's how they did it. So the way I back calculated, what we need is I took the total revenues that we need and divided by the amount of equivalent residential unit that we have in the city, which is 7,944. And that $375,000 divided into that number, that generates the number that I presented, which is $47. something.
Okay, I guess what puzzles me about that approach is just that the density above the ground isn't factored in. Is there something you can say about that?
I can look into that in more detail. Mine was an overview of the entire study, and coming up to finding out what the methodology was, back calculating what we did. There is a provision there for...
It might help, doesn't the above-ground part includes the roof systems, right?
Yes.
And so anybody who's got a building, their above-ground roof systems are included too, so their impervious surfaces, the roofing system plus all the impervious system around the building itself. So it's not just the parking areas that are counted, but it's, you know, for example, the shopping center, Langley Park, it's the roofs, the roofs of all the buildings which effectively collect, collect rainwater and runoff. So that's, and so that unit, the 1,275 goes as all of those square feet. So that's, and so that unit, the 1,275 goes as all of those square feet.
And when you're dealing with stormwater, I mean, what you're trying to get at is what is causing water not to be able to flow through the soil. So the height of a building, whether it's one foot or 10 feet, doesn't really affect the quantity of water that can get to the soil. It's actually the surface level that blocks, you know, the amount of the footprint of the building itself. The height doesn't really affect stormwater. Now, we could extrapolate into density issues that Ali was alluding to and you do get, you know, some complicity there, but basically when you're trying to deal with stormwater issues in a general scope, what you're really dealing with is footprint issues and impervious surface issues rather than height of buildings.
Okay, thank you.
As I was addressing, a different question, but her point was, when we have a multi-story, do we equally contribute that, I mean, use each one of them to have that many square foot? And I'm not sure if that's, I'm not sure how that complexity is calculated.
Okay.
So, Colleen?
Kind of following up on Terry's theme that the $47 would be a bare minimum, get us to a bare minimum level. I was looking at the numbers and seeing that there's only $66,000 as of June 30th, 2005, kind of an end number. Not a lot of reserve dollars, am I correct, for a stormwater program? Have, have we spent stormwater money on things other than stormwater in the last few years or has it all been stormwater related?
I might add, I'll kind of deal with the financial part. The expenditures for this year, I believe, are budgeted at $228,000. So I think as a percentage of expenditures, the $66,000, you know, is relatively high. However, it's certainly been dwindling for your benefit, Councilmember Clay. We're actually digging into that fund balance this year by about $15,000, I think. So that figure is expected to go down by years end. This is a restricted fund, so it can only be used for stormwater type projects. Several years ago, I believe it was in FY04, there was $200,000 that was transferred from the Stormwater Management Fund to the Community Center Fund to somewhat offset the cost of the stormwater improvement associated with this project. I believe it was in '04, I'm not positive about that.
Okay. Well, because I'm like looking at, let's see, Buffalo and Albany, $35,000. I mean, one project is half of our, of our reserves, so. And I'm looking at the project list and I see Linden Avenue and Lincoln and Elm, which of course warms my heart. I'm wondering about the city ice skating rink at 1010 block of Elm and I don't see it on the, on the list.
1010 Elm, that's pretty close to the Elm, Linden Avenue.
Yeah. But Linden Avenue kind of goes down the hill and I understood what you're talking about down there is...
Yeah, I think the plan for Elm is to do a swale across the street, so the sub-pump wire that's currently contributing to that pond is actually then channeled down the street into Linden and into the storm drain.
Oh, okay. So that's part of the Linden piece. Excellent. How effective have we been at monitoring and charging for increased impervious surface? Hard to know?
Well, I know in terms of the single-family, I mean, we have a, we have a standard fee that, that is set in a decision that was made when the fee was established that depend, we don't really vary for a single-family house and there are some that are small and some that are larger. So it's, the average is what was established as the, as the criterion for the stormwater fee. In terms of the, the other developed, developed lots, the residential, I mean, not residential but commercial or multifamily lots, we do that based on the information that was originally gathered from the CH2M Hill. I don't believe there's any active effort to reevaluate the impervious surfaces of those lots.
Is it your sense that they've changed much?
It's not my sense that they've changed much in, in a way that would significantly impact the rate of, of payment that the city's receiving for those.
Do we give any credit for onsite containment that isn't related to the percent of impervious surface like, you know, collecting roof water or, or green roofs or rain gardens and other kinds of onsite containment?
Our ordinance doesn't establish that within the fund payment itself, the annual payment. However, in Ali's permitting system, there certainly is a method if there was an expansion or a creation of a, you know, enlargement or establishment of a new facility, that would have to get a stormwater permit and would be within the 5,000 or more square foot of development. Then any kind of measures that they could use to offset quantity of rainwater, quantity of stormwater they'd be contributing to the system would be part of that permitting process and part of the overall evaluation. Is that fair to say?
That's, that's fair. There is, there is trade-off in the money on the way you permit it, but there is no provision for...
No mechanism now?
Actually financially discounted on the rates because of the rainwater.
Okay. And last, the last comment I had is, is just a comment and that is, I, I used to do a lot of projects with kids where we actually use the kids to do our, our GIS data collection. And we started at about fifth grade and some kids tracked all the way through high school. And it's kind of a great partnership with the schools because they can go out and, and do the data collection and it's part of their science project. Older kids can enter into the, into the GIS systems and, and our group actually has a program that's specifically designed to allow kids to interact and enter data and there's actually some national projects with the U.S. Weather Service that are, that are good models for, so I don't know, I'd be interested, but I think it's a great way to get kids involved in science and get involved in the city activities.
A couple of things. One is, are there any, any of these expenses that are one-time capital expenses that, that ultimately wind up in the equipment replacement reserve? I mean, if we're, you know, does a GIS system qualify? How does this GIS upgrade or whatever we're talking about fit in with what I thought was other GIS work that we have in the city? I mean, is there one integrated approach to take the GIS or are we doing this piecemeal?
Well, the GIS issues that we have in mind, let me speak to that. And Ali, if I'm wrong, correct me, but the GIS upgrade that Ali has envisioned for our existing system is right now through the use of an intern, the GIS information that we had from 1988 maps was transferred onto our GIS system. So right now what we have is you can go on our maps and you will see pipelines that identify what was on the maps in 1988. There's a pretty significant error rate in those, I'd guess in the 20% range in terms of what was actually on the maps and what's actually on the ground. The way to find that, of course, is through our TV inspection. The component that we're missing is to be able to integrate our, our annual TV inspection program into our GIS system and the upgrades that Ali has planned would enable us to marry those two. We also have an issue now where the data within our GIS system identifies pipelines but doesn't correctly identify outfalls, which is a critical component in this. So we can't pop into our GIS program and ask us to identify the outfalls because it isn't, it isn't thumbnailled in the program correctly. It isn't identified. We also don't have the kind of detail level in our GIS system that, that lets you click on any particular manhole and find out how deep it is, how big the pipe is that connects to it, if there's an inlet involved, if there's not an inlet involved. You, you don't know that except to go out in the field. And again, all that information we're, we're accessing through our TV inspection. So we have the, if we have the raw data collected, we don't have a, a mapping system that's able to, you know, plug it into yet. So the GIS improvements that we're looking at is kind of a triple-tiered approach. There's just the initial straightening up of our, our mapping so that our outfalls are correctly marked. Then there's the actual data gathering. Some of it would be done through our TV inspection, other of it may be done by actual, you know, data collectors out in the field. But then we could translate that information into our actual, you know, manholes, pipes and, and inlets directly into the GIS system. There's a lot of extremely exciting and, and great opportunities out there where you can actually have video feeds so that you, when you click on our GIS map, you would see the camera picture that was taken by our TV inspectors, you know, what the pipe looks like. It's, it's just a great way to see potential deteriorated situations, you know, all pipes have leaky seams. When is it becoming a problem? When is it one that we should service now versus wait five years? So it's those kinds of ideas, but that's basically the level of GIS steps that we'd like to take.
Is, is there any value or potential for us acquiring the, the camera equipment or is it so expensive that it's only worth contracting? I mean, what's the trade-off since we're gonna be doing this every year?
It's very expensive, it's also incredibly labor intensive. The program, you know, that comes out, there's two or three people at least in the field. There's a lot of technical knowledge needed in order to operate that camera.
They are trained, skilled technicians to actually do that. To my knowledge, the communities larger than ours do not venture to do that. So that's really a place we don't foresee as quite. Let me just complete what Darryl was saying with regard to whether it's one-time cost or can it be one-time. The GIS is, the way we envision it is in tiers and phases. The first phase is to clean up what we have. The second phase is to populate the existing system that we have, the existing base map we have, the data. So that is over a few years, FY07, maybe FY08. And immediately after that, it would be replaced with what I refer to as discharge location data collection. In other words, taking samples of water, quarterly, identifying the hotspots and adding to the frequency of testing of the water quality, which is a big cost item. So, and with all the increases in cost of inspection maintenance, cost of construction, I would see that, yeah, there could be, you could look at it as a GIS of one or two, two, three years, you can spread it over three years. But then by the time you're there, there are other costs that come and replace this plus the fact that everything is up for trend in terms of increasing cost. So the budget that you presented, although I have to admit, most of it is estimates. And that's the best we can say for it. But they're pretty good estimates of what is to come in the next foreseeable future.
But it makes a difference whether it's gonna be all common this year or whether it's something you do over three years. I mean, and if it's something you do over three years, I'd like the budget to reflect it over three years rather than necessarily reflected in one year.
Yeah, the, the GIS is what we're planning over the next two to three years and as, as Ali mentioned, it would be replaced by water quality testing costs. So that's why we sort of pulled it out as a category of NPDS cost. Those water quality testing costs would be ones that would be ongoing and repeat. And, and it's very difficult at this point to accurately predict what the cost would be because until we have base testing, we don't know where our problem areas are. And we also don't know what the federal standards are gonna alter or be changed to reflect, you know, when you've got XYZ in your testing, in your water quality testing, you have to do a frequency of, you know, monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, it'll be, it'll vary based on that. And that again would be one of those costs that we would assume at this point to be borne by professionals in the field, not something that we would take on ourselves, at least in the initial testing.
The last comment I want to make is a little bit about Terry's point. I'm not convinced that something increasing the budget to do something called projects we haven't defined is necessarily the best place to go to start with. And what I'd be interested in doing is asking both the committee on the environment and the Sligo Creek group to bring us some options for what I think Terry identified as, you know, more advanced and more effective stormwater controls. One thing that I'm interested in is what can residents do with their houses to reduce the stormwater flow versus the effectiveness of a pond? You know, what do we spend on a pond? What's, what are the land costs or the land costs in terms of loss of utilization for, for current uses? And what are all those impacts versus would it be better for, to encourage people to treat the stormwater at the house and not have it run off down the street in the first place? And if that were the case, would it make sense to give people credits? If you have, if you install a system that catches all your drains and all your drains never enter the driveway and so the only impervious surface perhaps is what runs off your driveway, should you get a credit for it? And might it be more effective to spend dollars and not collect dollars by doing that and just simply identifying projects to do? So I'd like to see, you know, a selection of projects and local, you know, home-based alternatives and get some sense of where we get the most bang for the buck.
I, I would like to agree with that. I think that, I would like to see us becoming sort of more proactive on sort of more advanced ways of controlling stormwater. But I, I remain concerned about the cost and I think what Mark's suggesting in terms of looking at various alternatives and trying to figure out what's most cost-effective as well as what would be of most help to the environment is probably a good way of going. So I'd like to second that. The second thing is to just, when we started doing this TV inspection thing, I don't remember that there were many other communities our size that were doing this. This was a fairly, it was sort of cutting edge in terms of maintaining stormwater systems and we have budgeted for this. I mean, we do essentially every, every stormwater pipe in the city on a, on a once every three year basis, which is from what I understand from what other communities do is still very advanced and we're much more proactive in terms of maintaining a clean and, and structurally sound stormwater system than other people do. And part of the costs that we pay for stormwater is because we do this very good job. I think there's always a tendency for governments to sort of postpone sort of infrastructure maintenance and sort of figure, oh, well, you know, we'll wait till the pipe breaks or the road falls apart before we do anything. And by being as proactive as we are and by dealing with things as we have done when we discover the breaks, I think we are keeping our system in much better shape than we got it from WSSC. There was an example, when we first took over the system from WSSC, I remember, within the next few years, it was complaints, repeated complaints about, you know, overflows for the stormwater inlet at the corner of Jackson and Ethan Allen. And, you know, the city went, cleaned it out, cleaned it out, cleaned it out. Finally, we sent the TV thing down there and discovered that the problem was that there was no pipe connected to that inlet. And then maybe there had been one at one point, but there certainly wasn't at that point. And so basically we had to run a whole pipe down Jackson Avenue to the creek in order to accommodate that runoff. And so clearly we were doing at that point a much better job than the agency that we had taken over from was doing in terms of stormwater. Either they had never put a pipe there or it had totally collapsed on their watch. So I think, I, I know that every year when the stormwater bills come out, I get a ton of letters about the cost of the stormwater program. And I just think it's important that people understand what this is paying for. This is paying for a very enlightened and proactive management of our stormwater system so that we don't incur those huge costs down the road where some whole pipe has collapsed and we don't even know about it. The other thing I remember is one of the reasons that we set the stormwater fee as low as we did at the beginning, and Darryl will probably remember whether I'm right about this or not, is I think we were assuming that some of the money in the fund balance and the stormwater fund balance would be expended over the next few years before we raised it to the $28 that we thought we were gonna have to do. So it wasn't that we knew it was gonna be 28 and we just arbitrarily put it at 24. I think we assumed that some of the fund balance would be spent out over the years. And the last thing was that I was looking at Montgomery County's stormwater fee and my recollection was that the last time we looked at this, their fee was much closer to ours than it showed on your chart. And I would be interested if you can gather any more information for us on what's included and what's not included in their fee. And if you did their fee on the same basis as ours, what it would cost. I mean, clearly if they had figured out a way to do stormwater much more cheaply than we can, that might be something that we, we would want to follow up on. My guess is that they have simply put some of their costs in other places, but I would like to know the answer to that. And I would be really interested in getting some follow-up information.
Well, one of the things that we discovered in looking at that not too long ago is they don't have a TV inspection program in Montgomery County. So that's, that's certainly an essential part of our program. I just wanted to also sort of paint the whole picture of the TV inspection. Yes, we are proactive and responsible, stewards by moving ahead with the TV inspection, but we also have a stormwater system that is 70-plus years old. So it's kind of incumbent on us to do that kind of thing because of the age of our system. Oftentimes, we're comparing ourselves with newer communities whose stormwater systems were put in in the last 20 to 30 to 40 years and there really is no comparison. The quality of materials is totally different. We've got old clay pipes, at least we don't have wooden pipes, but we do have old clay pipes and those are known to break down after 60, 70, 80 years. So we're in a, in a situation where TV inspection becomes more and more critical because of the age of the system. But there aren't a lot of places doing it because of the cost. We have a goal of covering the system, covering our system a third of the time, covering it in three years. Right now, this year, because of the new contract cost, our, our schedule will be one in six years. in six years. So unless we significantly increase the TV inspection budget, we will not be meeting our three times, three-year cycle.
I don't think you can get cutting-edge for $26 a year. And I also noticed from your figures, Ali, that the price has only gone up about 75 cents in 10 years. So this is the Rip Van Winkle School of Public Administration. And the other observation or contribution to the discussion was certainly, you know, cutting-edge is great, but we have to be able to pay for it. Credits, terrific idea, but we don't want to create a, a management nightmare where we have to add staff in order to keep track of all the credits that people deserve and should get. But the point is that when I get my bill every year, it says stormwater fee, I say, fine. What is stormwater? It's this chasm in this, in the gutter that sometimes has a little sign on it saying this is going into the Chesapeake Bay. That's basically all I know. Now, tonight, I've learned more than I ever have known, maybe more than I ever wanted to know about, about stormwater management. But I think that what's important is, is that most of our citizens do not know this complex of activities. They don't know, for example, that it's all part of a larger system that involves the pickup of trash and so forth along the, along the streets or doesn't go into the gutter. But I would think before we announce an increase of 60, 70, 80, or 90 percent to the public, or bill is going to go up next time, we, we really ought to think carefully about educating folks, as I've been educated tonight, about the important components of this and the benefits to them in paying this money. And it should be more than flyers. It ought to be a concerted campaign. Maybe things put in the envelopes with statements.
It's a good idea.
As far as it goes on, maybe some op-ed pieces in the local newspaper by you, Ali, or others, you know, who are knowledgeable about this, and in the, in our city newsletter. I mean, we really ought to make an effort because there is a lot of fundamental, important things that are unique to this area, and we really need to do, I think, a better job of explaining what it's all about.
Yeah, I'd absolutely agree with that. One of the things we've been talking about doing is just better publicity around, anytime we do a project, we just completed a significant project on Heather Avenue, and unless you lived there, you wouldn't know it. So we've got to do a better job at putting it out on the website, on the city newsletter, and council meetings, including photographs and, you know, basically trying to capture people's imagination about what we're doing on a daily basis.
And I could tell you that even the major things like Heather Avenue, mostly the people in the neighborhood know it as, what are all those trucks doing, blocking my street for all these weeks? And they don't necessarily know what the benefits are.
Yeah, I had made a note to myself to make sure that we included something in the bills that go out with a much fuller explanation. So I totally agree with that. I just wanted to have a quick follow-up on where I thought Mark was going to go with something he brought up, and he didn't go there, so I'll just quickly add it to your list of things. When you talked about whether, whether, what it was getting with, with the expansion of the GIS and whether that was kind of all that we wanted to do or how it tied in, what I was thinking about was the presentation we saw a couple of years ago at the MML conference by a vendor who, who was set up with a van, and they would go around and use a camera hooked up with the GIS to make a record of all of the infrastructure on the street with the, you know, telephone pole, telephone poles, light poles, street signs, various things, and put all of that into the database as well, so that when somebody came up with, well, gee, the light is out at the corner of such-and-such, you knew the pole number, and I didn't know whether any of the upgrades that you're looking for would be needed or would accommodate that type of thing. And I just wanted to suggest that I, I thought that was a good idea at the time, and I'd like to see a, a proposal for integrating that if it hasn't already been done.
Well, the system that we have can take any quantity of additional information. It simply comes down to getting the data and inputting the data. So there's a field component, and there's a, you know, kind of office download component. So our, our existing GIS system can handle layers of data. We just need to get it from the field and translate it into a digital information.
My, my recollection on that was that the cost to us was in the $12,000 to $20,000 range.
Yeah, I don't have much background on, there's sort of two components, what we found recently with the GIS is, is in the universe of what, $30,000 to $30,000 to $50,000 to do the GIS data collection and downloading. So I, I think that it's probably seen some increases in costs.
It was a couple of years ago.
Just like anything else with the IT information technology, it's, there's no limit where you can go. And what I presented here, 10 to 50, which is referred to, just speaks to the basic needs of GIS to fulfill NPDES requirements.
Terry?
Thank you. I would just like to second Councilmember Ellerich's suggestion that you talk with the Committee, Committee on the Environment and the Friends of Sligo Creek when we think about, you know, how we do move into a more progressive role in stormwater management.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The one other thing I wanted to say is that currently, we're in a situation where we have significant system defects, as you see in that list. So what we're trying to do is sort of balance the need to do actual concrete field repairs that are fairly expensive with the idea of reduction and, and education and promotion. So we, we have these varying levels of concerns and issues that we have to address. We absolutely need to get to these defects that we know are in the system. We would like to also incorporate an education and a residential component that would allow people to do rain gardens and rain barrels and those kinds of things. But it's difficult to balance those out when we've got the list of deficiencies, known deficiencies, staring us down that we do currently right now in the city.
When I asked earlier about credit for onsite containment, I wasn't really thinking about credit in the terms of a credit on the bill. I was thinking about a, a program when I lived in Oakland, the city offered, I believe it was up to $1,000 of assistance with landscaping. You had to do a, a series of things. It had to be a serious landscaping plan. It had to reduce impervious surface on your site. But that, that kind of thing's a lot easier to deal with than trying to go out and calculate square footage. And the other thing is that while I was in San Francisco this weekend, San Francisco is running a great big billboard campaign that you can see from all the highways about the need for replacing their storm and sewer systems. I'm sure you've seen them on the television the last few years with houses falling into giant pits. So we're, we're not alone.
There are.
But of course, I'm sure we're not going to use giant billboards.
Let me just make one other recommendation. I thought that your, your PowerPoint presentation was very helpful. I wonder if we could get a printed copy of that? I would find it very useful. There was additional information in addition to what was in the written materials. And then the other thing is presumably the city manager would like from the council some sense of whether we want to go forward with this general type of fee structure.
Yeah, what I was going to say is in the absence of any direction from the council this evening, we are fast approaching in the next few weeks where I have to have at least the budget numbers together so we can start compiling the data and putting it in a presentation format to the council. In the absence of any direction this evening, what will be coming forward in my recommended budget will basically be what we, the staff has recommended, and then the council can deal with it during the budget process. If there is a feeling tonight of where you'd like to go, that would be helpful. But we're not necessarily asking you for a decision, but I did want to let you know in the absence of it, we'll be bringing forward the numbers that Ali has proposed.
So, so unless the council tells you, absolutely don't go there, you will move forward?
That's correct.
Okay, is there anybody in the absolutely don't go there category?
Will it be the range of, of values that were recommended, or the minimum or the maximum?
Well, I think the only variance when I, I put together the cover sheet, but in talking to Darrell on Friday, has to do with probably the level of capital. In all candor, I think the higher end of the $375,000 is probably more realistic. It would probably be, I think it was...
Forty-seven, twenty?
Yeah, I would say that whatever fee I recommend, there will not be cents on it. To be quite candid with you, I was spending some time this weekend going through some of the delinquent accounts, and I'd like to make a comment on that before this item gets closed out. But a lot of folks just tend to write an even dollar amount, and I had to sit there and redline out a bunch of accounts to authorize finance to write it off because people had 68 cent balances. So the finance department did ask me to implore the council to set an even dollar amount to avoid having to go through that write-off process every single year.
I would like to suggest that when you do that, that you round up to the next dollar so that that extra money is available should we come up with a program that's suggested by one of the committees or the public.
Yeah, I would also say that my support is behind the higher dollar amount. I think since we haven't changed it since '99, we probably should revisit this a little more frequently so that we don't make such a large jump at one time. But I would think the $48 range would make sense.
I'm willing to leave it up to the city manager. I wouldn't require her to either round it up and round it down.
The only other thing I just wanted to mention, both for the council's benefit as well as for the communities, is the council may recall when the auditors issued their report in December, part of that process is basically called a management letter, which are things that they are noting as possible concerns or areas to be addressed by the city's management and the city council ultimately. One of those issues had to do with collections of unpaid both stormwater fees as well as license and refuse fees. And that is something particularly on the stormwater front is where we have focused our initial efforts. We have issued two complete billings for FYO five, which would also flag any delinquencies for prior years, for those individuals who have had, these are several commercial accounts primarily, some residential that had particularly large balances. We have already sent mailings by certified mail. Now, these range in various dollar amounts, but I probably have on the list that I reviewed this weekend, several hundred residents, probably in the range of 300 to 400 property owners who are delinquent in their stormwater fees. We are moving forward with either placing liens on those properties or depending on the dollar amount, actually taking them to tax sale. But when you have basically fees that multiply over four or five years that are totaling $200 and you're spending almost more in staff effort to collect it, there is a point at which the city practically needs to stop sending notices and billings to folks who are not being responsive. We certainly don't like to do that, but when you send two complete billing cycles and you're not getting any response at all from the, many of these individuals, it's not only problematic from an administrative standpoint, but quite candidly, it's blatantly unfair to those residents of the city who actually do fulfill their obligation by paying the fees. So wanted to just get that on the record. We will be sending, we're not sure at this point if we're going to send notices again or go ahead and proceed with placing liens or taking properties to tax sale. Had a discussion with the city attorney's office earlier today. We have fulfilled our obligation under the law by sending the billings. So that is an issue that we're actively considering what to do, but we're not getting much of a response from several folks.
Presumably, these aren't individual residential properties?
The vast majority of these are residential property owners. I probably literally have a stack like that. It's 40-some pages with about five or six property owner records.
We're not taking somebody to tax sale for $28?
Probably not. We're going to pursue what the options are, but there are residents who actually owe more than that. I'm having some discussion with the finance department of what's the administrative cost associated with tax sale liens or whatever measures are available.
Might I, might I suggest the first line might be to publish the list in the newsletter and point out to folks that they may have missed an opportunity to take care of this and they might want to?
We're considering one of the things I discussed with the city attorney's office, and we need to kind of obviously weigh the cost of collection versus what you spend in efforts to collect is perhaps doing, truthfully, pre-printed postcard mailing, basically making it entirely clear that one of the consequences of non-payment can be the property going to tax sale to see if that jolts somebody. I think the billings that have gone out from finance, I'm not sure what they've referenced in terms of penalties. We can publish 400 or 500 property addresses in the newsletter if that's what the council would like, but that really is what we are looking at.
I'm suggesting putting the names and addresses in the newspaper.
That's what I thought you were suggesting.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Certainly something the council can consider. I'm not asking you to make a decision at 10:35 in the evening.
Could I see the list of Ward one people first?
Yeah, it's not sorted, it's not sorted by Ward. It's actually through kind of a weird addressing system that came off of the assessment list. What I had thought is maybe a, maybe quicker, more expedient way is if I sent the council perhaps an email just reiterating what I said this evening, that perhaps you could forward to some listservs. I appreciate Councilmember Williams' thought about kind of calling people out, if you will, but if there's a friendlier way of kind of reminding people of what their obligation is and perhaps through some of your neighborhood listservs that might encourage people to pay. I'm certainly open to any suggestions the council has, but the response we've gotten to doing multiple billings has been somewhat disappointing.
I certainly would be hesitant to list people's names and addresses without forewarning them in their, in one of your dunning letters.
And, and my suggestion was friendly. I just wanted to remind them.
So what I would suggest is maybe, given the lateness of the hour, if any council member has any thoughts, perhaps you could send those to me over the next week, and perhaps we can have some further discussion about this matter in the weeks to come.
I was going to suggest that we take this up again when we discuss the budget.
Yeah, well, in terms of how we handle some of the collections, there are some timeframes associated with certainly those property owners, we're, who had the larger balances that have not contacted us to make arrangements, we will, we have already advised those individuals by certified mail that their property would be taken to tax sale. That timeframe is approaching rapidly, and we will be proceeding with that. I think for those amounts that are smaller, where we have to weigh the cost of collection versus, you know, what they owe, that perhaps can be a discussion we have. I think there is a point at which the, I'm somewhat uncomfortable just to let balances go because I do think that's unfair to the vast majority of city property owners who do honor their obligation.
Yes, I agree with that.
Taking Councilmember Austin Lane's suggestion, would it be possible to get, for the council members to get a list of those past two residents so that if a council member did want to intervene on their, their constituents' behalf, they could contact them?
What I could give you is, and like I say, we're doing some cleanup with the 68 cents here and there to basically go ahead and write that off. That's not even worth pursuing, obviously. Once we clean the list up, it unfortunately cannot be sorted by Ward because that's not how it came off the property tax record. I think the residential list, if I recall, was about 40 pages. It's about eight and a half by 11. If there's any council member, not putting this on you, but if you would like that list, I'd be happy to give it to you. You could kind of sort through it. Unfortunately, I can't give it to you by Ward.
It's sorted by streets?
It's actually sorted by account numbers. As I understand it, the account numbers at some point tie to some parcel record or something in the county's database. So I'm not aware that it can be sorted in any other manner. Certainly, we can talk to our IT department about that, but I think the way it comes out is kind of the way it's available.
I would offer my services of sorting it by Ward or identifying the wards for those if we would get...
If it could be dumped into an Excel file, it's actually off the city's mainframe system. What I can do, Councilmember Siemens, and I know this is sort of your field of expertise, is I'll forward that request on to Abel Cussey, our IT manager, and perhaps the two of you can talk techie to techie and see what you can work out.
Thank you.
What we need is a Denver boot for stormwater.
Unfortunately, the only person that impacts your neighbors...
All their...
Yeah, unfortunately, all it, all it does is it impacts your neighbors, so, okay. Appreciate that information. We'll follow up on it. And thank you for the presentation. As I said, I'd love to have a paper copy, and I think it was very helpful and a lot of good information. All right, given the lateness of the hour, we're going to move quickly on to the next item, which is the legislative update, which is... I'm trying to move off this one, too.
I want to concentrate tonight on condominium regulation legislation. However, I'd like to start with a completely different subject that was brought to my attention today. Apparently, the county council Fed Committee had a discussion of the capital improvements to Tacoma Piney Branch Park today. And my understanding is that Nancy Florine in particular was very interested in having the city of Tacoma Park contribute to the cost of the improvements of park and plannings Tacoma Piney Branch Park.
Where did that come from?
I don't know. I didn't see the, the, I wasn't at the committee meeting.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yes, apparently at the Fed Committee meeting at the county council today, there was a suggestion made that the city of Tacoma Park contribute... suggestion made that the city of Tacoma Park contribute to the cost of renovation of Tacoma Piney Branch Park.
County park, are they going to give it to us?
As I said, I wasn't there. I got a phone call from the person at Park and Planning who's the project manager, expressing extreme concern because she certainly knows our financial situation and has been working with us for a long time. This is a county park that's in dire need of renovation and has been in the capital improvement program for some time. I do know that the request is that we make some contact with Nancy Florine and Marilyn Praesner in particular to encourage that the county Park and Planning pay for their renovation of their park. And so, I will find out more information, but this was a voicemail I received this evening and it said, "Makes a significant concern," I believe. So, I'd like your help with that. I will find out more information and pass it around.
Yeah, if you would do that, please.
On a different note, apparently there was some reference to this today, but there's been quite a lot of discussion in the state legislature about condominium conversion regulation. And in fact, there are nine bills being discussed within the state legislature related just to this subject. Of those nine, there's about seven different kind of variations. There's some overlap on a couple. And I have to say that I'm very pleased to see them. They're, for the most part, very helpful. They recognize the problem that not only Montgomery County has, but a number of areas of Maryland related to the impact of condominium conversion on the apartment choices and housing choices of residents of Maryland. One of the ones that we've been promoting has been one that's referred to as MC 61206. It also has a house number of House Phil 792. And this bill only affects Montgomery County. Mayor Porter and council member Elrich and I attended the Montgomery delegation meeting last Friday morning where this item was discussed. And it actually engendered quite a lot of discussion among the delegation, which I thought was useful. And then it went through a voting procedure and we were keeping little tallies. And by the time the chair made the final vote, it was a 12 to 12 tie, which is considered limbo. And what that does is it allows, provides for the bill to come back in one week. At that time, a new vote will be taken. So, like this Friday morning, a new vote will be taken. And if it is in limbo again or fails, it fails. If it passes, it passes and that goes on. There were a number of discussions following the vote about what could, could there be some modifications to the bill that make it pass? And unfortunately, the official sponsor of the bill, Senator Grossfeld, was not able to be there. She's got some wonderful other bills that she was testifying about at the same time. Nevertheless, I passed along some of the comments that were made after the discussion, after the meeting, after the vote. One of the options is that, to kind of reference, to recap the bill, one provision would be that a cap to the number of extended tenancies that could be allowed for households that have low-income people that either have a senior citizen or a handicapped person as part of the household can go up to 40% as opposed to a 20% cap that currently exists under state law. And then there are, there is enabling legislation that would allow either the Montgomery County or a jurisdiction, municipality within Montgomery County to do some additional steps if they declare a rental housing emergency. And the primary point of that is that there could be a vote by tenants as to whether or not the condominium proposal should be accepted. There was talk about having the 40% cap be part of the enabling, the may provisions as opposed to a standard provision. And so, that's one of the discussion items. Another was to find some way to have the legislation really just affect Tacoma Park. Under state law, you can't say, "In Tacoma Park, there will be this provision." You have to define it as a group. So, some of the suggestions that I was hearing, Montgomery County municipalities that abut Prince George's County, or, you know, what is it that you can identify that kind of only Tacoma Park counts in that group? I did pass along those suggestions to Senator Grossfeld and this evening I received a reply and she's uncomfortable with those provisions. She has two concerns. The first is that she thinks the 40% cap is a reasonable cap and she is concerned about those households that are very vulnerable. And she also thinks that the problem is larger than Tacoma Park and she'd rather see something affect more people than, more areas than Tacoma Park. However, she's open to discussion. What she'd like to do is have her do some personal hand pressing and see if she can get one more yay vote that would make the difference. But I just want to report that back.
I've talked to a couple of the delegates, including Senator Grossfeld, and they do think they can get the other votes. I think that it was not clear to the delegation that this was a may ordinance rather than a must ordinance. And so, their concern was Montgomery County would have to do this. And in fact, all the language is Montgomery County may, may, may do this.
But not the 40% cap.
Well, and so, one of the things is to make that a may so that everything in the bill is a may. Another possibility would be to say may go up to 40%, which means, again, the municipality or the county could look at the problem and see whether or not, you know, they need to go to 40%. And something I was thinking about, and I've talked with a couple of people about this, is requiring that the county and the municipality find that in each case that the loss of that building would constitute a loss of affordable housing because one of the things the delegates raised was that this would apply to everybody. And so, we'd be protecting middle-class and wealthy people. And God forbid we should do that. So, I thought perhaps, you know, offering an amendment that said that the county must find that any building would constitute a loss of affordable housing. So, it'd really be focused on those buildings where there is a change in affordable housing and that might make the bill less onerous because it'll be far less broad. And I would support that if that eases the concern of the delegates and they can talk to the other people who don't get protected, if that's what it comes down to. But I think it's, I think this is winnable.
Yeah, I was very pleased with the discussion at the vote. I mean, there was clearly a lot of support and this is really a major intensification of the provision. So, that was refreshing. And frankly, I, you know, I think we've come up for a vote four times now on this bill. And sometimes it's been postponed, you know, a couple of times it's been postponed and various times, one time it was approved and one time now it's in limbo. Each time I thought we would lose. So, I think we've, you know, the more that people find out about the provisions and who gets impacted and kind of how this works, the more that there's been support. And that's good. Now, having said that, the vote is this Friday. I'm booked, frankly. So, I need some assistance too in trying to decide and work with Senator Grossfeld on what amendments. And so, maybe I can, maybe you can work together on that a little bit.
I think that the notion of having the locality declare that this particular building would constitute, losing this particular building would constitute the loss of affordable housing is probably a way to deal with the concerns about higher-income housing in a way that isn't sort of sending it out in terms of jurisdictions.
But I just wanted to, you know, indicate that, you know, right now, the workload level is very high. And so, all the assistance that you can give me, both on the Tacoma Piney Branch Park element and on some other activities, I really appreciate.
One other thing, which actually goes in the opposite direction, I apologize. At the end of the discussion before the delegation, there was a comment made by an individual speaking for the county, which made some statements about the position of, well, actually they didn't make a statement about the position. The statement was that if this bill, essentially implied that if this bill were in law, that we would not have been able to work out the arrangement on Hampshire Towers, which is actually factually incorrect. I wonder if we can, and I'd be happy to work with you on it, put together a letter, which is basically correct stat for the record, which basically says we are working with the developer and...
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. I also spoke with the, one of the legislative aides for Montgomery County, who wasn't aware that we had been in conversations with the developer of Hampshire Towers and talking about their concerns and addressing their issues. And she seemed, you know, she seemed surprised about that. And she, you know, I think that one of the things that people forget is that we have a strong interest in making these various projects work for our residents. And I think that it would be useful to convey how actively involved we are in trying to make these projects work.
I think that's a good idea. People are not to make statements when they don't know what they're talking about. But in any case, I agree that it would be...
We'd better be quiet.
But I think we should definitely send a letter. And as I said, I'd be happy to work with you on what's included in that letter and sort of helping to pull it together.
That would be useful.
Yeah, she said, "Well, you should know that if this, that if this law had been in effect, Tacoma Park wouldn't be able to do this and nobody talked to Tacoma Park and found out whether we would or not."
I'd like to bring up a couple other of the legislative items that I did not have in my previous discussion about condominium conversion. And one of the bills that's being proposed by Sheila Hickson is one that I think has quite a lot of merit. And it offers a tax credit. A jurisdiction, if they wish, may identify a way to do tax credits to developers who do condominium conversions but preserve extended tenancies and determine, you know, at what point do you get some kind of a credit for that extra work? The idea there was to encourage larger amounts of extended tenancies within buildings and to give credit to those developers. And I thought that was, that's the only bill that I see here that does have some kind of carrot related to that, to the provisions. And that's something that several of the delegates have asked for. The 40% amount is also, cap is also in one of the bills that is being proposed by delegate Rosenberg and will be going through a regular process. So, there is a possibility that the 40% cap could be something that could be imposed statewide if that actually got approved. I appreciated that that number was the same as the one that was in our discussion so that it showed some consistency. I think that's the main thing. I did pass out to council my revised chart of the various provisions. It has some significant differences because a number of the bills had changed. One of the things you should know is one of the bills has already passed and gone into law and is retroactive. And that is the one that has to do with disabled persons. The definition in the state law is of handicap people. And basically, that handicap description is like a visual thing. If you see somebody that looks handicapped, that practically is how it's defined. So, if you have other kinds of handicaps that are not visible or there's not a way to protect those people under the, hasn't been under the current law. The new law does have a much better definition of disabled people. It deals, council member Clay, with a more correct definition than we had seen before. The other thing that it does is it gives a preference to persons that are in an accessible unit when they are wheelchair-bound, which is another one of your concerns, and I appreciated that. What this means is that in a normal 20% cap for handicap or senior, low-income households, it goes by seniority. Who's lived in the building, first you have to have been there a year and met certain criteria, but then it's by seniority. What this does is if you're in a handicap accessible unit, you have priority to stay in a handicap accessible unit, even if your length of living in the building is not, doesn't meet the seniority test. And so, that's a useful distinction because of the difficulty that people have in finding other accessible units.
Thank you.
That's all I can think of tonight.
And I want to appreciate, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done on these. You know, when I was here on Thursday evening and what was it, 10:30 or something, you were still working on revising the section by section yet another time. I know you've put in an enormous amount of work on this and I appreciate it.
Mayor Porter, this was a legislative update and there are other potential legislative acts besides the condominiums.
Yes, there are.
Catherine Tunis brought up the thing on the mercury switch tonight, and I wonder if this would be appropriate time to ask what you knew about that and whether we, something that the council might want to take action on.
I suggest that on a new item like that, we should probably advertise it before we discuss it and make a decision on it. I can schedule it for council discussion as soon as I can, but I don't know that on an update that we should introduce a new, early item.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know the deadline for the, I don't know when the public hearings are for that. And they may, they may be very rapidly approaching.
I guess I have a comment because Terry mentioned that bill. I was thinking of the Kensington lighting bill. And, you know, I feel the same way that we ought to be able to take a position on that. It's in our citizens' interest. It's the potential to save everybody money. And I don't think everything has, you know, that comes up and needs some kind of support. Needs always to have that action. I think the mercury issue, and we all know that mercury is just absolutely deadly poison and absolutely terrible for children. And getting it out of the environment is a good thing. So, I can't imagine an argument other than it makes, you know, auto recyclers, it makes it a little bit more difficult for them to do recycling.
Yeah, I have, I have two feelings on it. In one sense, I don't know if the kind of history of the positions that you've taken kind of encompassed that and it's fine and I can go forward without having it be a discussion. I mean, I think that it's, I guess I think I know where you stand and where it's likely to go. The other side of that is that the timeframe is moving really fast. And I do feel incompetent in that the mass quantity of bills that are going forward, I can't keep on top of them all and bring them all to you just because of the timing. And so, I feel, I would like to have been prepared to have a discussion about the mercury issue.
And that's why I think it's okay for us to do something on the mercury stuff and on the lighting bill because you can't keep up. It's not frankly the most important part of your job to track everything going on in Annapolis. And I think that at the same time, you know, our help on a couple of things are important. I mean, I'll give you an example, something I wouldn't, you know, put forward. There's also a bill about mercury in vaccines. There's a lot of debate about whether, you know, what that is. And then there's some things where, you know, I might have strong feelings. I don't necessarily think that we could take that without, you know, really getting public input. But on the lighting thing and on recycling, you know, making sure the mercury doesn't go in the ground, I think we ought to feel safe about doing that. And if somebody yelled at me for supporting not putting mercury in the ground, I'd be willing to take my lumps for that.
I don't think it's a question of the validity of the legislation. I think it's a question of the validity of our process, whether we're going to say, "Okay, we're going to make a decision at 11 o'clock at night without any advance notification," or whether we're going to put it on the agenda and let people know that's what we're doing.
No, I appreciate that, Mayor Porter. But I think that we need to find out as quickly as possible the schedule for this bill so that we can act as soon as necessary.
I certainly can, I can wrap that very quickly.
Yeah, I think if you can get us information, and I will try and get both of those on the agenda as soon as I can, so the council can have an advertised discussion.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that one of the discussions that Jesse and I had was something that I can keep coming back on a pretty regular basis so that it's able to react quickly as these new, as the new items come up. Nevertheless, I can't keep on top of everything.
I have no suspicion.
Right, no, I think if it's appropriate and other council members are supportive, we could draft a letter of support instead of having it be a formal council action. If there's some deadline that we would miss by voting for council.
Right. I think the general practice that we have had is that there will have been some statement that you would have, a position that you would have formally taken at some point in the past that would, that the bill would fall into. And then a letter without having to go through this process is entirely appropriate. We do that often. The question is if it's not in that category, and I honestly don't know this one. But, you know, it's very helpful. The other thing that's very helpful is also individual communications, just from you individually do have some weight. Doesn't have to say that that's what the city of Tacoma Park position is, but it does show that we have interest. And so, emails are really actually taken quite seriously in the state legislature and are routed pretty well.
I would be interested in information on the bills that Mark and Terry referenced.
I'll pass that on.
I also wanted to find out what, if you had an update on the money for the Carroll Avenue street skank.
No, I don't. Uh, no, I don't. I don't.
I might be able to add that. I spoke to Sarah Dane's late Friday afternoon. They have basically kept postponing any announcement on the community legacy awards. That's happened repeatedly. She was going to place a call this week to see if she could get any additional information. We're not quite sure kind of what that means, but they were supposed to actually announce the awards, I believe it was in December. So Sarah will be checking on that.
Right. One of the things that's a little tricky here is that, is that I think there's a, a game going on about if the state delegates find one way to spend money, that, then the idea is, well, maybe they can take it out of community legacy and, and add some money that they might not get otherwise. And so there's been this little pull and tug, I think, behind the scenes about how to, you know, should they take money out of the community legacy pot, which would affect then who gets the disbursements out of that, that program. The city's position has been, don't touch the community legacy pot. It's, it's a good program and we've certainly benefited from the past, so we think we should in the future. Nevertheless, when we go and we say we want money for these bond bills or various things, they, they look at other pots of money that they could maybe add to their total amounts that are possible. So it's, it's a little bit, those are kind of behind the scenes discussions. I don't know how they're coming out, but that's my suspicion behind the postponement of the announcement, that there's some tug of war about what the amount is in the pot.
I would also just add that the staff is, while this whole issue has been pending, is investigating other possible sources of funding for the project. We're not trying to leave all our eggs in one basket in case it starts to fall apart.
Right.
Okay, are there other questions, legislative questions? All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Discussion of the letter. Bruce has done a very nice draft, if I could say so. You want to talk a little bit about it?
Well, my, my, I have a, I have a final copy here, if people like it.
The purple one?
No.
No, no.
No, that's a, that's your copy, just to have in front of you, but I have a real copy here that we could sign if we wanted to send it. You want me to just do a quick dance through the...
Why don't you do the 32nd version and at, as important, if you could just put it out for public observation, you know, because I don't know that we've circulated it very much.
Right.
So...
Because since I only drafted it yesterday.
Right.
But we thought it would be appropriate to take quick action and send a letter to the county executive reiterating any of the arguments for keeping a ladder truck at Station Two rather than acquiescing to the proposal by the fire chief to move it to Station One in Silver Spring. He presented it originally, I believe, to the city manager as precipitated by the restrictions of the temporary station and that that would drive the timing. We point out that the temporary station and the new station have always been designed to accommodate the current ladder truck and the new ladder truck, which will be going into service within a month, which is three feet longer. Quote back to him, a number of statements from the report that the county fire rescue service did of the aerial unit study from late 2001, early 2002, which said basically, excellent coverage for Silver Spring with the two ladder trucks in the area, one at Station 19 up on Seminary Road and the other one at Station Two in Tacoma Park. They have excellent response among the best in the county. Don't need more down here. Leave them where they are. They took the one out of service in one. That was a reasonable thing to do and a number of backup for supporting that. Then a brief explanation of the difference in service that we would be getting from, response from Prince George's County as opposed to Montgomery County. If the truck were to move into Silver Spring, that would kind of pull some of the response from Prince George's County, particularly Stations One and 34, and the difference in staffing levels that we would experience. Basically, Prince George's County staffs those, that equipment at half the rate that Montgomery County does with career staff. Eight, Montgomery County, we currently have eight full-time career staff 24/7. Prince George's County would staff the same equipment with four career personnel on duty from Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. only. So we would essentially be getting a new fire station with a reduction in service, and that's not anything pretty to kind of play. And the final argument was that the, most of our high-rise buildings remain unsprinkled and most of those in Silver Spring are sprinkled.
Can I just ask a question about the Silver Spring station? Do we know that the ladder truck would fit there?
My, my sense is that the, that the ladder truck would, would not fit in the old station that they're currently occupying, the new station that they're about to occupy. Sense is that it would fit there, but my understanding is that the staff that would come over with it might not necessarily fit.
Ah, right. The quarters. So would it make sense to strategically, so that we don't have it as an us versus them kind of thing? I mean, if, if the county wanted to put another truck over there, that certainly wouldn't be a problem for us.
That's, that's a expansion of service that we would be only too happy to support.
Right.
They could have the old truck.
No, I think stinky, broken down, needs to be put to rest. But, you know, I just, I, I want to make sure, I don't know if this letter is the right place to make sure, but, you know, we have residents in Tacoma Park who are the chief and on the board of directors over there, and I hear from them that...
At one or at 19?
At one.
No.
Roger McGary, Nancy Cohen.
Oh, is he at one now? I thought he was at 19.
I, the, the section that talks about the issue that you're speaking about, I think is a direct quote from a report. It's not that the city's saying this, but we're quoting a report that makes it clear that Station One, that leaving the truck where it is does cover Station One. I don't think that...
Right.
That, that means that our position is they shouldn't get another truck.
You, you, say that again, I heard a lot of negatives.
Okay.
So, so you're saying that we...
By taking, by quoting this section, I'm...
Doesn't mean that we're against them getting a truck.
Right.
Okay. Well, and, and also with the expansion that's going on in Silver Spring, they may be able to justify it, but I think all of these arguments are excellent, showing that they have new development over there. We're dealing with old, unsprinkled buildings. We, we can't lose service.
Yeah, and, and what became clear from the report that the county did was that the coverage area for Station One is fairly compact and that even, even when there's an expansion of kind of density, buildings to be covered, that it's all still relatively close and therefore you can have a quick response because you haven't increased the distance, whereas the difficulty in moving it over there and coming back here is the distance to get back over here. Particularly to areas along New Hampshire Avenue, particularly what was referred to last week as Box Seven, Box Two-Dash-Seven, which is essentially all of the area down behind our current fire station, heading over toward the district line, New Hampshire Avenue and Eastern Avenue. All, it's, it's basically three-quarters of my ward is the area that would get left.
With lower, lower level service.
The, the only other thing I wanted to say is how much I appreciate Bruce's leadership on this. I, it's, I, I felt very bad missing the meeting where Chief Carr briefed the council last week, and I made sure that, that other council members knew that I was very supportive of, of the council taking action on this. And I think this is the appropriate next step. I have also been made aware that as a volunteer at the fire station, any position I take is supposed to be filtered through volunteer fire chiefs and other structure. And so that's somewhat awkward. I, you know, I certainly feel that my council duties are, come before the volunteer fire service status, but I, I appreciate you taking the lead on this and, and I think that the points that you make are very well-informed and, and show your commitment to the, the fire station. And, you know, it's not like this is the first time they've proposed taking the truck away. So we've had a, a chance to marshal our facts.
Right. There was also a suggestion made that we work with the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee to, on a public forum, which I thought was an excellent idea, and I would recommend to the council that we do work with them. I'm pulling that forum together, and I thought that the structure that Buddy sort of outlined was a good structure. We can, regardless of who sponsors it, I think we could work with them on that.
I, I did have a chance to talk with Buddy during the break, and it sounded like a forum that we left with the Public Safety Committee organizing and, and leading was a little more than they could take on, given what they're working on doing right now, which is cert training and things like that. So it may be in our best interest to include it as part of a, a council meeting so that it does take place and that all of us are here and we can hear from the public. Possibly having a, a public hearing before we consider some, you know, next step. That's an idea.
I don't, I don't think we have room for it. I think this should be done sooner rather than later, and there's not room on a sooner council meeting for something which I assume would be several hours long. So I, my suggestion to the council is we do it on a night other than a council night, but on a night when most of us can be there. Because my experience with these things in the past is that we should expect it to go on longer than we could accommodate within a council meeting. And I would hate to cut it short because, or to not do other business that we have on our plates. But, okay, if people are generally agreeable, we can work with the folks in the Public Safety Committee on sort of working all, out all those details, and we'll try and keep the council informed. Am I, I'm generally getting yeses on doing the letter?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So sign before you leave and sign above your name.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is a discussion of the appointment of council representative to the board of the Volunteer Fire Department. We had a discussion about this previously. My understanding of where we were was we were leaning toward reappointing Bruce because of his longstanding and that there was going to be another person listed as the alternate.
And if I can correct that, it's not an alternate. There are two positions.
Okay. Appointment of two council representatives to the board of the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department. I, Bruce, do you want to report on your conversations with various people?
Just that there had been...
Doug had, had expressed an interest at one point, but, okay, and then Doug has pulled himself out of contention.
And then still Colleen and Terry were interested.
Okay.
Still interested.
Yes, I, and I had also was very interested in being a member of the board. I had served on the board in 1999 during that term. Of course, I've been off the board since then. Last term, when I was re-elected to the council, I had expressed interest in being appointed to the, the board at the Volunteer Fire Department. And as Heather Mizur was a new council member, at Mayor Porter's request, I had withdrawn my name at that time to allow the junior council member to take that position. I now, I now hesitate to withdraw my name. I, I think it's a very, it's a important board within the city, and I feel I can make a valuable contribution, and so I would like to be considered.
Sarah, a chance we could appoint two representatives and have one alternate?
I was just going to say that, you know, in the past, we have had, we have benefited from having long-term council members on the board for a number of years. Carol Stewart was on the board for many years, and I understand Bruce has been on the board for four now?
Yes.
Four years. And it certainly benefits the council to have somebody with long-term experience on the fire department board to provide sort of some history, and as Bruce has exhibited in his, in his drafting the letter, a lot of knowledge about the fire department. At the same time, I think it's very useful to use the other spot as a way of educating other council members about the fire department. I enjoyed my couple of years on the fire department board. I found out a great deal about the fire department I never would have otherwise, and I think it's useful to do that. So I think the structure that we've had, which is one senior council member to provide some history and some sense of stability, and then rotating the other one among other council members so that everyone gets experience on the fire department board is a good thing to do, and I would, for that reason, although I think Terry had done a very good job on the fire department board, I think I would support putting Colleen on for the additional experience that it would provide her.
And if I can just provide a, a quick recap of the representation that the city's had on the board. My sense was that for a number of years, when I was first on the council, there wasn't a very active representation, but not having been there, I'm not sure that that's accurate. My sense was that the, the board positions kind of revived with Carol Stewart being appointed to the board. I think she was on for all six years. And that then in her last two years, I was kind of the junior appointee. There had been previous, I know there, there were some sporadic appointments to the board going back to Tony Davenport in, from Ward Four, but I'm not sure how, how solid the coverage has been over the years.
The only thing I can add is I've been in the, a volunteer at the fire station for 12 years, and three of those years I was on the board of directors. I, I really didn't see enough council participation, and Tom Horn and I, and I believe Linda Lyon came and talked with the mayor about it, and we also talked with Carol Stewart about it and stressed to them how important it was for the city council to have that connection. Their, you know, it, the fire, fire department folks take it very seriously, to the point of, at every membership meeting, announcing who the two reps are and that they're absent. So we took care of that little problem as well.
But excuse.
Excuse, now those cues. But I, I appreciate that we have had consistent representation at the board meetings since that time, and I, I think that, you know, I'm willing to support Terry's interest. I think he has shown that he's very committed to COG and the different additional commitments he has to the council. It's not to say that Colleen would not be, but I think that if Terry says he can, can take this on, I would like to give him that opportunity.
Well, we can do a vote, I suppose. I don't have, do you have suggestions to... I don't, it, it seems to me it's, it's after 11 o'clock. I don't want to, I don't want to prolong this. My suggestion is that we just sort of get a sense. I would like to, my, as I said, my recommendation would go to Bruce and then to Colleen. I don't know, people just want to say...
I'm, I would support Colleen.
And yourself, presumably. I don't know.
I, I thought we already took care of me a number of weeks ago.
Well, I don't remember. Okay. I'm, but just to clarify, I would, I'm supporting Bruce staying on the council and then Colleen to give her some experience. Bruce, it sounds like, Terry, do I understand that you would support Bruce and then yourself? Is that your, would that, is that where you're going, to your previous statement?
Sure.
Colleen, do you have Bruce and yourself?
Okay.
I have a question. If the purpose of this is to give people experience, then what happens a year from there or two years from now? If, I mean, Colleen could be on for 12 years and Bruce could be on another 12 years, so does that mean that nobody else gets to go on?
That the...
Or if that's, if the purpose is to have a mix of these things, then should we be approaching this as some kind of, you know, one slot stays more long-term and another slot rotates? If that's the rationale.
I, I think, I think what we do is we do appointments every year. So we can, next year, choose to do whatever we like. We can, we can reappoint the same people, we can appoint different people.
And I would encourage whoever does not get appointed to attend. There's nothing, they're public meetings, there's nothing keeping you from attending, and that, that also shows commitment.
And, and presumably you said you wanted to see Terry?
I said Bruce and Terry.
Bruce and Terry. Okay. Do you have a preference, Doug?
Junior, less experienced person makes sense for this next year.
Okay. Okay. I think we've got four votes, if I'm counting correctly.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just think that if the rationale is a mix of experience, then we really have to be willing to look at this, you know, every couple of years and see if we want to make sure other people get on there.
Okay. Fine. Do you want to be on it, sorry, Jason?
No. Congratulations. But I hear, but when you hear multiple people saying they want to do something...
That's good.
Then we should open it up so that's possible.
And we haven't had that problem before.
We haven't had a problem before.
We haven't had that problem before, and I, and I appreciate Doug and Colleen and Terry and Bruce for their interest in the fire department. And I certainly, the year that I got on, that wasn't the problem either, and I think we've made some good strides, so thank you to everybody. All right, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
And don't forget to sign if you haven't signed.
Sign what?
This letter.
You want to sign?
Above your name.
I thought you did what you had to say.